Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for December 7th, 2021. My name is Carrie Markneck. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of June 16th, 2021, and Act Relative to Ending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Amy Protski?
Here.
And Millie Milton?
Here.
And Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Gubert?
Here.
Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Bob Federico?
Here.
David Kane?
Chair.
Great. Just ground rules for the meeting. For presenters and applicants listed on the agenda, Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation, speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will, for public comment, as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand in ways to be recognized, please note party or phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click raise hand on the bottom of your screen in ways to be recognized. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each name and afford three minutes for any comments. I think that's it. So with that, why don't we get started with the agenda? Tonight, we have presenting, we have a presentation by David Kane, our MIS GIS Director regarding the RC zoning district. So, welcome, David.
Oh, good evening. Haven't seen all of you guys in a while, so it's good to see your faces. So, let's see here. I've got some information to share with you regarding your recent discussions with, with regard to parcels in the RC zoning district. I know you've been considering a few things there and you've wanted to look at a couple of different analyses. And so, we've got a final draft of some of these analyses in place. And if it's okay with you, Carrie, I'd like to share my screen. And yeah, okay. Let's see here. All met, please. All right. Let's see. Can you guys see my screen?
It's just black. Oh, there you go. Yep.
Let's see that now.
Yep.
All right. So, again, we're looking just at the RC zoning district. And there are three criteria that I used for this analysis. We're looking at, again, the RC zoning district. We're looking at residential parcels in that district. Specifically, lot sizes or parcels that are in excess of 40,000 square feet. And parcels that have frontage greater than 100 feet. And so, I know you've been waiting on this information for a while. We were working on a few different pieces of this. Some of this is quite easy to do with some of our systems, and one piece of it is not. And that's what took a little bit extra effort. We had a great GIS intern over the summer that, at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, that helped with some pieces of this. And so, some of that person's work is incorporated into this. And then, the piece about the frontage, that's the part that required some extra, some extra assistance. And so, we use our GIS consulting firm app, GEO, to address that piece of it. And so, we're going to pull all that together and share that with you tonight. I just want to briefly describe the methodology. I know there's a lot of words up here on the screen. Basically, the components of this were to identify all the parcels in the RC zoning district to pull out those that were less than 40,000 square feet, so that we're only including those larger than that in the analysis. And specifically, looking at residential land uses within the RC zoning district. And then, the part of the methodology, and again, I'll touch on each of these very briefly, was to determine that frontage. And this is where we got some help from a consultant. Basically, I'm not going to get all technical, but there's a process whereby parcel lines that were coincident with rights of way were identified and pulled out. And that's how we determined frontage, because we didn't have any other way to do it, although we found the numbers to be quite accurate. And really, what this came down to is when there were multiple lot lines along a right of way, we have all that information, but we didn't have a summary of those numbers. So, for example, and I'll show you an example, if there are three or four parcel lines that make up your frontage, we needed to get the sum of those three or four parcel lines. And that's how your frontage is determined. So, if we look at this, let me see here. Going in the wrong direction. Okay. So, here, we've got the RC zoning district outlined in black. And parcels in blue are those that are larger than 1 acre, excuse me, 40,000 square feet in size. So, about half, roughly half of the parcels area-wise, you can see here in blue, are what came back initially. Now, the next step was to look at the uses, because again, we're looking just at the residential land uses here, not commercial or industrial. So, it didn't matter if those were over that size or not. And land use is determined by the Department of Revenue. They have a property type classification code book that assessors throughout the Commonwealth use for determining land use for property taxation. And so, that's the data we have and that we use and was the standard for what we're looking at tonight. So, our next slide here shows a number of parcels in yellow and orange. These are a subset of the parcels on the previous screen that were in blue, but only those that are residential in use. So, again, we've took everything on RC. We've gotten rid of everything that's smaller than 40,000 square feet. And now, we're focusing in even a little tighter, now just on residential land use. So, everything in yellow is a single-family residence, again, on a parcel greater than 40,000 square feet. Everything in orange is residential, but some other form. It's not a single-family. It could be a duplex. It could be a condo, you know, multi-unit, what have you. And so, that's just a visual, good visual representation of how many and where in the district these parcels are. So, moving on, the third part of this was to determine the frontage. And like I said, we took parcels where they were coincident with rights of way and formed one contiguous line that determined frontage. And only those with 100 feet or more frontage were included. And just showing an example here, in the bottom left of the screen, this is just a kind of a zoomed-in area along Brigham Street, where a fair number of parcels adjacent to each other all meet that criteria. The one in orange, I believe, is a three-unit, I don't know if it's a three-family or a three-unit development of some sort, but everything else in yellow is single-family residential. Those in white don't meet the criteria. They either don't have the frontage that we're talking about, or they're smaller than that 40,000-square-foot minimum that we're considering. So, this larger map here on the right side is just zoomed in right at the street level. And I'm bringing this up simply because I want to show you that, again, here's an example of a parcel that has three different line segments that ultimately make up the frontage. And so, this process summarizes these three numbers or any lot where there's more than one to determine whether or not it meets that criteria. And so, what we found, after applying all of these filters, is, well, let me go back to these assumptions. Again, only parcels with the majority of the land is within RC were included. So, for example, a parcel that maybe is in two zoning districts, RC and one of the adjacent zones, if the majority of that parcel was within RC, we included it. If it wasn't, we didn't. Now, you can, on a case-by-case basis, maybe look at some of these parcels and determine where the frontage is instead of whether or not the majority of the parcel is in the zoning district. But we're talking about a handful of parcels. So, if there's going to be some finer analysis, this is where we might want to look further. And also, there was no distinction made where parcels had frontage on more than one right of way. So, for example, if a parcel is on a corner lot and has a, has a one-lot line on Street A and another lot line on Street B, we're not making any determination regarding the suitability of which one is the appropriate frontage. If one's a front yard, a side yard, et cetera. Just the fact that it had in excess of 100 feet is what includes it here. So, again, if there's a concern about that, you know, we can go back and look at it. So, observations, we found 417 parcels in RC zone that were larger than 40,000 square feet and had that minimum frontage. And of those, 280 were single-family. So, if we were to go back to, let's see, this part, this map here, everything in yellow and orange is that 400, whatever the number was, 17, I think I said. And everything in yellow are the 280 parcels that are single-family in RC that meet the criteria that we're talking about. Now, I'm going to stop sharing this and bring up a different, different file. Let's see here. And share this. Okay. So, can, do you guys now see a table with a list of parcels?
Yes.
All right. Great. So, this is the final output, if you will, of the analysis. These are all of the single, these are the 280 single-family homes in RC that, again, are in excess of 40,000 square feet and have in excess of 100 feet of frontage. They're just listed alphabetically here by street name. But you can see, there's a fair amount of them. And these are, again, the use code shows, single-family resident, 101 is single-family residential, got that zone map and lot acres, et cetera. And I believe this was included in what was sent to you. So, I believe this to be largely accurate. There's probably a handful of parcels that require a little bit of further looking at. But I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss any aspect of it.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions?
Quick question. Did you guys make sure to sift out anything that was town-owned?
We did not look at who owned any of the parcels. No. So, I don't know if the town has very many residentially, you know, parcels that are used residential, with a residential land use. It'd be easy enough to, you know, to see if the town owns any of them, but we didn't filter on that basis.
I think, I just noticed one, because there's like a big yellow one in your earlier slide. I think that's owned by the town on School Street. You think?
Let me, let's pull that up and take a quick look. So, this one, this one, I'm sorry, here's School Street, running north-south. Anthony, was there a specific parcel you were inquiring about?
I just have kind of the largest one of the
This here?
Yeah.
Could look that up while we're talking real quick and let you know who owns that. I don't know if it's a town.
No, it's not. Okay. I just got it here.
You found it?
Yep.
I think it's the driving range of the golf school.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. Thank you.
Amy, did you have a question as well?
Yeah. Could we get a copy of the data in like an Excel format so we can sort it by like acres versus street name?
Sure.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, Dave, thank you for this. This is very helpful.
Sure.
Of the 417 qualifying parcels, the difference between that and the 280, what are those other parcels that you're identifying?
They're both residential.
Yeah.
But the 280 are single-family residential, and the balance of them are some other kind of residential.
So, they could be a multifamily? Could they just be straight land that no one's built on yet?
No, they wouldn't be straight land. There's a residential land use assigned to it. So, that means there's, there is something, you know, in some cases, it could just be a, like, it could just be a house that's an accessory use to the primary use. But in most cases, it's, you know, used primarily for residential, and it could be any type.
So, there's potentially another 137 lots out there that qualify as a residential, but would be multi, could be more than a single-family. There'd be, because if the difference between the 280 and the 417 is 137.
That's what you're seeing in orange.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
And if you'd like that in an Excel spreadsheet, I'm happy to include that as well.
Well, it's the potential to be developed, right? I mean, right now, it has a multifamily on it, but it could be developed.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's the board's purview. And, you know, whatever it is you're using this data for or to consider, you know.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
David, can you go over again what the, how you get the, some of the frontage measurements for three parcels for one lot? Is that what you were doing, or is that?
No, we were looking at, let me, so what we were looking at is where a parcel has, a typical parcel might just be a rectangular lot that's perhaps 100 feet by 200 feet, right? Or whatever size. But, you know, like this, you know, this polygon, this rectangle here, many parcels have more than one lot line that makes up their frontage. For example, this one right across the street where it's 106 feet and 43 feet. So, those two lines together make up their frontage. And therefore, you know, it's 150 feet, it looks like, here. What made this difficult from an analysis perspective is that we had to automate the sum or the addition, the, you know, the math that was happening, to get the full frontage. Because if we had five lot lines that were, you know, 60 feet each, and we looked at just one, we wouldn't get the full size of the frontage. I'm not sure if I'm explaining that correctly. But basically, we needed to summarize the full length of the frontage to make sure it was properly included. So, it's always just one parcel, but it could have been made up of multiple lot lines.
Yep. Can I just explain, like, Millie, if you look at the screen that he's got up there, 101 Brigham Street, right? Frontage is 110. So, that's pretty common. What's even more common is the abutting one next to it, 95. You've got two numbers, 47.83 and 55.82. You add those together, that's a total sum. Not uncommon, when you look at GIS's map through the town of Northborough or any other town, that you'll have multiple numbers adding up to a total.
Okay.
It was done at the time. So, doesn't mean it's, you know, it's just the way it is.
It's just what, it reflects what's on the deed.
Exactly.
Okay. That makes sense. Other board questions or staff questions? Okay, I do, this was actually an exercise that was done when we discussed Aaron Hutchins' property at 91 Brigham. And I see he has his hand up, so I'm going to see if he has a question here. Hi, Aaron. How are you?
Hi, thanks for having me. So, bear with me. If I go longer than three minutes, I'll try and keep this as succinct as possible. Like you, I just got the data about 10 minutes before the meeting started, and I was able to throw it into an Excel spreadsheet, Amy. And really, when I came before the board, just to refresh your memory very quickly, my initial prospect was for the development, possible development of the acreage behind me. I have a total of almost five acres. And I wanted to know, in the RC district, how many properties had that kind of substantial acreage? I'm not sure why we settled on starting at one acre and going up. But if you throw all of that into an Excel spreadsheet, if you limit the acreage to two acres, then that drops the properties from 280 to 54. So, the majority of the properties that we see on these maps are not really the subject of what I'm trying to address here with my own particular property. I'm looking at properties that have substantial acreage. Even if you go and set the bar at three, you've got to have a minimum of three acres for a single-family residence in the RC district, it comes out to a total of 23 properties. And that's really where I think the conversation should begin. Because ultimately, what I'm trying to address potentially is the modification of the bylaws pursuant to 7-06-030, the supplemental regulations, and Table 2, the Table of Density and Dimensional Regulations. Currently, in order for me to develop the back acreage behind me, I have a right now where I could put a house in my backyard if I wanted to. But in exchange for putting that house in my backyard, I would lose three, almost four acres of my 4.71 total. And that is what I'm trying to get changed. I think it's outrageous. And so, bear with me as I just share with you just briefly some last numbers from the data that David has shared with us. If we limit the acreage to two acres, two acres and up in residential C, that's 54 properties, the total number of acres on those 54 properties is 232. If we said, if we somehow came up with a bylaw that said you can have, you can have as many single-family residential homes on your lots as you want, as long as each home has a single acre of land. You know, not talking about frontage, because frontage is really the barrier to all of this. If we limited homes to one acre apiece from those 54 properties, it would potentially create 178 new homes in Northborough. Would that devastate Northborough? Would that cause the creation of a new school building? You know, an additional police force? I don't know. I haven't gone into that detailed analysis. Like I said, I just got this 10 minutes ago. I wish I would have had more time to prepare something. But that's the kind of, that's the kind of discussion and analysis I was looking to initiate with the board, is just to talk about what properties in town have substantial acreage and what kind of bylaw changes we can make in order to make more friendly the development of single-family homes in the RC district without overwhelming the town. So, you know, those that have over an acre of land, you know, congratulations, great. But you're out of the potential of adding a new home to your land because you don't have enough land, never mind frontage. So, that's basically my initial feedback based on the data I just received and David's presentation. I'd love to see a map with just those 54 or 23 homes, because that's all, that's all I was really trying to get at initially. So, that's my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Could I just respond one to that, please, Carrie? Chair, to the chair, can I just respond to that, just for the board to consider? This is not only for RC, this is for RA and RB. You have all those residential districts, which a lot of them might have 16 acres and only 200 feet of frontage, right? So, this is all about frontage, right? So, if you're going to allow reduced frontage in RC, you have to adjust for that in RB and RA as well. Right? So, this is not just an RC thing. You could be talking about other growth in the other districts as well. There are quite a few long, narrow lots throughout the town that just don't have the frontage. So, I just wanted to clarify, if you're going to consider that, you need to consider it in all the districts, because that doesn't seem like fair planning to me.
Okay, so why don't we, unless anyone has anything else, what I would like to do is, I think it's been a while since we saw Attorney Hutchins' proposal. He sent something over to us a few months ago. And I think all of us just received the data right before this meeting. So, personally, for me, it'd be helpful to go through it all and refresh my memory too with what was presented and what the issue was. And also, if we have access, David, you mentioned you would be able to send this in a spreadsheet. Or if that's, I guess, it sounds like Attorney Hutchins also put it in a spreadsheet if he wants to share it as well. But just so we could look at, you know, I remember wanting to look at it by acreage. Is that in a spreadsheet easily for you, David?
It is. Yeah. Yeah, no, happy to send it out.
Okay, so does that sound like a good idea for the, would the board members like to review, maybe refresh our memories on Attorney Hutchins' proposal, look at this data, and then look at it in a spreadsheet? Does that sound, or are there other comments or questions that we have?
Well, I do wonder, to Michelle's point, is whether or not it's, we can just look at it in RC, but I do think that RA and RB should not be excluded in the discussion.
Yep. Hold on a second. Aaron, I can't tell if you have your hand raised still or raise it again.
No, I was just, I raised it again just to say, in response to Michelle, that, you know, if it's an issue that needs to be addressed town-wide, then let's address it town-wide. I wasn't, I wasn't clear whether we could designate a change just for RC. I don't know whether that's, you know, town council would need to weigh in and determine whether a single-family zoning change could be made just to the RC district, or whether it had to be town-wide. But if it has to be town-wide, then I think the property search has to be redone. And the focus isn't on, isn't on 40,000 or greater, it's on the substantial acreage of at least, whatever, three acres or greater. And let's find out what the potentials are for this discussion that we're having.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Carrie, if I could just make a couple of points. Just to remind the board, if you recall, when we talked about doing this exercise, you know, the board decided on taking a look at double the lot size. So, I mean, that's significant. You know, I understand Mr. Hutchins' point that, you know, his particular property, and that's what he's interested in naturally, you know, is almost five acres. But, you know, the board originally wanted to look at what the impact would be of, you know, potentially changing the density in the RC zone. It is the most dense zone in town. It's not right or wrong if you change the lot size. But, you know, the board wanted to look at, if you doubled the lot size and just had slightly bit of more frontage, you know, who could it possibly affect? So, you know, whether it's, whether it's, you know, an acre, an acre and a half, two acres, you know, depending on what you may or may not be considering for zoning change, I mean, I have no idea. We haven't even it, you know, depending on what you may or may not be considering for zoning change, I mean, I, I have no idea. We haven't even discussed that, but, but anyways, the point, the point being is, is that the board, you know, wanted to look at, okay, but let's start someplace. And so let's start at, starting at doubling the lot size. So that's, you know, obviously how we arrived at. I, I, and actually, David and I both were, were very surprised that there was this many parcels that would possibly be affected by, by a density change. The other thing is, is that, um, you know, there, there's, there's two, there's two methodologies as, or, or, or two ways of developing property in Massachusetts. You either develop it as a, um, as what's called an approval not required, which basically the rest of the country does not have. Massachusetts is one of about three or four states in the entire United States that allows single lots to be developed the way that we allow them to be developed in Massachusetts. And that is by, if you have enough frontage and you have enough square footage, boom, you, you have a, a, a building lot. Now, you know, of course, you have to meet other things, septic and wetlands and building code. But, but basically, it, that is, like, it's just unheard of in the rest of the country, that you can just develop a lot off of an existing street. So that's, that's one way to develop a, a, a house lot. And then another way to develop a house lot is through the subdivision process. So, you know, you, you may be talking about some sort of, you know, hybrid model that you want to come up with, or you may be talking about, you know, reducing frontage. I mean, I don't, a- and I don't think you know yet, you know, until you, you take a look at this. Um, you know, and we completely acknowledge that, you know, everybody just got this information, um, you know, just before the meeting. So I don't, I, I'm, I didn't even expect anyone to have a, have a minute to take a look at it. But we figured, you know, you'd be able to digest it, you know, and then, you know, talk about it further at your, at, you know, at a follow-up meeting as far as wh- what it is that you now want to do with this information. So, um, but, you know, again, just, just, you know, you've got to keep in mind that if you want to reduce the frontage, y- you can't just randomly pick, um, you know, I want to reduce the frontage to 50 feet, but you know, you only need, uh, ten thousand square feet. I mean, I, I'm just being ridiculous, but you, you know, there, there's going to be some reason behind that. Like, it, you know, because again, lot sizes are mainly, and historically are based on, um, the availability of either um, septic systems or sewer. You know, it's in New England, it's pretty much based on soil type as far as how lot sizes are set for each, each community. So just, just some things to take into consideration when you think about, you know, whether or not you want to increase the density and how you want to increase the density.
Thank you. Okay. Additional board comments before we move on?
Just quickly, I just, I think the points made certainly by Michelle as well in fair planning. I mean, this is like a, a very complex, uh, situation. If you were going to open up, I mean, RC is one thing, but then if you had to, or if you wanted to look at RA and RB, and then the impacts that it could make on town, I mean, this is really something you would have to, I think you'd really have to dig into to understand the ramifications, uh, as a result of it.
Okay. Do we at least want to take time to look at the data and the original thought process and why we embarked on this expedition and, and come back with thoughts on it after we've had a chance to look through it a little more closely and then look at the spreadsheet as well? Next step.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's feared to, uh, Mr. Hutchins, to the board, to each one of us to bring back feedback. Um, just go and take a look at it and sort of digest it all and think about it as the entire community with all the other districts involved and see, um, as was mentioned before, the complex nature of it. And, you know, you really only have a couple of months before town meeting, and is this something that you maybe want to bring to the master plan committee to look through it along with the planning board? But I would even fit, put the argument forward, if you're going to reduce frontage, why not allow someone who only has two acres? Why only do it for three or five? You might have people say, why am I being excluded?
Right.
When I've only have, you know, a small amount, I don't have quite enough frontage. I mean, land is very valuable now, and people want to, you know, uh, if they want to sell it, they want to profit as much of it. And you have to be really cautious because you could really be opening a lot up. So I think people should took a look at the numbers and go back and think about it, and then offer their feedback to Mr. Hutchins on how we should proceed.
Okay, why don't we take that approach and, um, move on to the next item? We have a couple of different proposals we're looking at. Um, so thank you, David. This was, um, great. I appreciate you going through the research process.
My pleasure. Happy to help.
Okay, thanks so much. Um, next on the agenda, we had, uh, when we last met, we looked at the proposed revisions to the open space residential design by law. So the board was taking a closer look at that and coming back with feedback to this meeting um, after reviewing it. And I don't know if anybody has it handy. I actually don't have my files handy. If we want to look at something or not, if we just want to provide feedback, that's okay too. But, um, do board members have feedback from, uh, the last time we discussed? And Michelle, um, did you receive a copy? You must have received a copy just of the proposed. Yeah, okay. And Fred, did you have anything else to add to it from the last time we met?
Uh, no, I think I gave you my comments last time we met when we were going through it with the applicant prior to the meeting with board.
And then Kathy, did you have anything? We didn't get your, I don't know to what extent you're involved in the process, but did you have anything that you wanted to comment on?
No, I, I mean, I didn't watch your, your last meeting when I was out, but, you know, Fred and I had discussed, um, and Bob, prior to your meeting, and, you know, we had given some feedback to the, um, applicant um, or the proposer, and, and I, I'm going to assume that whatever Fred, you know, shared with all of you, you know, incorporated what, um, what I had, what we had talked about as staff on the whole.
Okay, all right, great. Um, board members, do you have feedback coming back from the, from just reviewing further or our last discussion?
I guess I can start.
Sure.
All right. Uh, my feedback would be like, the purpose of the open space residential design is to protect large parcels of open space. And I feel that it was originally put into RA and RB because those are the larger parcels in town. And RC is the more dense section in town, and I don't think it's the right location for this, um, open space design. I think there'd be a lot of unintended consequences, like we were just talking about with lot sizes. I looked into Newburyport that they had talked about doing, that they just did, and they conserved eighty percent of the land, they conserved the barn, it was a big parcel. Um, the open space residential design they did was specific for that specific lot. It wasn't for a whole district. I just think opening up RC to the open space residential design is, I, I, I'm not in favor of it.
I keep putting myself on mute, I'm sorry. Other board thoughts?
I, I mean, I just have some, some comments on the reason why they're going through this. And I, I can appreciate wanting to be creative with the lots and maybe, um, you know, having a, a nicer looking area there. But I keep going back to the reason this is a problem for them is because the cost of the, the property and the cleanup. So I feel that that really shouldn't fall under our decision-making process to, to enable them to pay it either a higher cost for it and accommodate this type of zoning application for that. If they were getting the property at a reduced cost, I don't think they'd be as concerned about how they're, how many houses they're going to put on it. I could be wrong, but that's my feeling.
Anthony or Michelle, anything?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I don't know if you. Um, yeah, just to, um, reiterate what Amy says, um, I don't think any of you guys were on the planning board when we had brought in um, this open space and cluster housing. Actually, I was the one who brought it forward to the planning board, um, many years ago. Kathy, I don't even remember when we did it. And the whole goal of cluster housing was, just like what Amy said, should be an RA, should be an RB, and there should be large, the houses are together. I think we were sort of almost, when there was a big, um, over fifty-five going on, and, you know, they were like, what are over fifty-fives going to look like? And that's sort of where we started the discussion about this cluster housing and what do you do with the large lots? And that's where this open, you know, uh, this bylaw that he's sort of trying to alter for his development came through. Um, and it was specifically for RA and RB, and that's the way it was sold to the town, was for us, RA and RB, so that we could have open space, it could connect to some trails or other open space, but it was never designed to be in an RC. Lot of discussion about why it should not be in RC. A lot of discussion. So I would find this very difficult if we go back and historically look at how this came about in the bylaw and look at the discussions on it. I think that there'd be a very hard time to pass it at town meeting, whether he decides to go through a border on his own, because it was never intended for RC. And, you know, uh, you know, some people talk about loopholes. Well, this is sort of a loophole that he's trying to come in to create for this one process of land. I also think that this exercise that we just went through, anybody who is, if we go forward and sort of use, you know, what Mr. Hutchins was saying, you know, can you reduce the frontage like he's looking to reduce the frontage? Then any of these other, you know, hundred and eighty or, or how many other lots, or even fifty lots could do the same thing in the RC district. Now you're creating a huge amount of density in an already denser area. So I think it's going to be a hard sell for town meeting, but the original intent of the cluster housing was never for RC. And all this, and Kathy can even talk to it. All the discussions with the ZBA and all the other boards when we brought forward to town meeting had, were, were really opposed and concerned about it ever happening in RC.
Okay. Anthony, thoughts from you?
Yeah, so I think the, the whole spirit of the open space residential design was meant for RA and RB. I was just basically mirroring what everybody else feels about this. Um, you know, I think we have a lot of farms in town, those will probably convert over time. It would be nice to have tools that we can convert those properties and, and save open space. I don't think this was ever intended for RC. Um, I'd hate to see also to change the, the bylaws for an entire district, uh, for one project right now without knowing what could happen as a result of it. So, yeah, I, I feel that, uh, it's probably not a good fit for that area. I also believe that, you know, I think you can build two. I don't know if it's three houses on that property. I think it's a viable, um, development that you can make money at, and that's what I would pursue if I were the developers.
Okay, well, I think, so we have on our agenda, um, Damon is also on our agenda, and I seem in the audience, so I'm gonna, um, Damon, if you wanted to comment, I'm gonna put you on here to just combine these agenda items and just give you a chance to speak to any of the feedback. Are you there? I didn't mean to surprise you, but I just figured I, I see they're side by side on the agenda. I think they meant they were supposed to be one. Any comments from anyone?
Um, I'm, I'm here, um, also with my business partner, Ben Lloyd Gary, and, um, our engineer Scott, I think was on, he had to, he had to jump off quick. Uh, I apologize if I have to jump off. Actually, I'm on my way to, uh, see my, uh, my son's concert at the high school. So, so if I do, uh, Ben, Ben will have to take over. Yeah, I can see the, the, uh, the boards, uh, the, the comments. I've been listening in. I, I think our position is we're not, um, based on the, uh, the initial presentation. Um, I didn't actually know anything about it until we, we heard it, so, uh, I certainly would like to, uh, to check it out as well. I think though, that, um, it's kind of, it's a little bit of an oversimplification, oversimplification to me as to what available parcels would, this would actually happen to. And I think once you, you, you eliminate, um, you know, as Mr. Hutchins was saying, like smaller parcels of land that, you know, wouldn't be good for adding excess of single-family houses, that is actually a much smaller number that would be for that. And again, this, uh, the, the bylaw is not, you know, changing, uh, just for our, our project. It's, it's for the, the rest of the town to, to improve development as a whole. And, and, you know, as was mentioned before, the one we did in Newburyport, that, um, that change wasn't for us either. Uh, that was for the entire town. In fact, there's, I think there's two, maybe three other parcels that right after us were, were going through the same thing. Um, because you, I mean, you couldn't, that, that was one of the contentions actually that we had, was that people thought initially that that was going to be just for us, and that was, uh, going to be spot zoning. So we, we had to, um, we, we made sure that, that zoning was, um, you know, was done specifically so that any, anyone with, uh, this, uh, type of parcel that that would work for could take advantage of that type of development. So, um, you know, that being said, with, based on what the board is, is thinking and, uh, saying, um, we might have to go back to the, to the drawing board and, uh, look at potential other uses of the, of the property. I know that, um, you know, we might be able to, to do, um, duplexes via special permit there. Um, and we'll also be have, we'll also have to look at other, uh, commercial uses for the, uh, for the property as well. I, I know, um, you know, we've been approached by, uh, one person at least so far who's interested in, uh, you know, potential rehab facility or, or something like that for, uh, via the Dover Amendment. Uh, so we're, we're looking at all different options for that, but, um, you know, again, it's, uh, I wish I had a better um, response to everything, but like I said, we, we didn't even know this, that kind of presentation was, was actually happening. So I, I didn't get a chance to take a look at it, uh, prior. So I mean, yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, I could just kind of explain a little bit of the difference of the Newburyport one versus, uh, we're actually present, presenting something very similar tomorrow night in Salisbury. I don't know if any of you guys know their code. So originally, our proposal was to potentially do a flex res development, um, flexible residential development, uh, proposal, and which would be a new district in your town. But we're doing one tomorrow night in Salisbury, which is a flexible residential. Right now, I think it's an acre and maybe two acres, and we're doing four houses, very similar size, very similar platform. If you read through the proposal between a flex res and a OSRD, it's almost the same thing. Um, which is why we changed the approach from designing a new, you know, a new tool to, uh, taking something that's already there and adapting it to, to use on other parcels. Now, I could throw out, you know, af- after seeing the last proposal, most towns do have a minimum acreage, so it wouldn't be open to everybody. Um, I think Salisbury, um, if you have a, they have a couple different, if it's commercial, it's five acres. If you have residential, there's no minimum, but most towns do have a minimum. So we could provide it as, you know, there's a three-acre minimum, so it's not, if you have one acre, you're trying to jam on a flex res uh, or, you know, uh, OSRD. Um, the OSRD, the reason why we're adapting it too is Newburyport does this. So we actually grabbed that from O'Leo Woods. So O'Leo Woods used it, um, over by the on-ramp to Newburyport. They developed that parcel, and what Newburyport does is they actually remove it after it's done. So if you look at the history, for some reason, um, they kind of clean up their books. So basically, they did it in O- O'Leo Woods, developed it out, uh, removed it, and then gave it over to us. But they like to kind of have precedent and use a similar, um, overlay district, and they kind of just adapt it. So our overlay district is the same thing, except for just, over there, it was like fifty percent open space. Over here, we had a lot more low wetlands, um, and a lot more acreage. We're near a landfill, so there was just a different type of land, so we were able to, to upgrade that to an eighty percent open space. But I'm sure after us, somebody will take that OSRD. I'm sure after we finish and close out, they'll remove it and someone would kind of adapt it. So, you know, the proposal is, yeah, it's very similar. If you look at Salisbury's, they have a couple different things that they use, which is almost used for the same way. They have, uh, a village center overlay where they'll actually allow two houses on one lot with, but you have to meet certain criteria, which is spark development in an underdeveloped area. It's actually changing the area of Ferry Road completely in over five years. Everybody's using it, and it's great. Um, and then the flex res is just like OSRD, but it's, if you read it, it's almost the exact same thing, except for the open space is just, uh, interpreted almost more like a planned unit development, which is just dedicated open space that can't be built on. So it's, you know, you're not. So it's, you know, you're not gonna later have garages and patios and things that over time ended up giving additions, stuff like that. And you kind of have conservation restriction easements on that zone, so what you get and approve is kind of there, and then the rest of the land is protected. So that was the direction, the reason why we headed towards that. And after the last proposal, where he kind of has a similar idea, if you have a parcel that's three acres or above, you do have something different than everybody else, which is, you know, most of them is one acre. So that could be an option too, is limit it to three acres and up. Allowing, you know, flex, or I mean, the OSRD. But it just gives a tool for underdeveloped parcels to be able to do something different if you're in a, you know, you have some land like the last applicant or the guy who was on before us.
Got it. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Does the board have any questions or comments based on what Ben just said? Okay. All right. Thanks very much, Ben. Okay, additional comments just in general from the board or what we want to, how we want to approach? Is this something that we think is not something in the cards this year? Or we want to continue to look further at, or?
I don't think it's the right approach. The whole purpose for like the OSRD too is to protect wetlands, and it's almost allowing more houses on the wetlands, which seems the opposite of what I would think of with an OSRD.
Yeah, it's interesting because we're really coming up with all these, you know, looking at development from more of a holistic view, and I guess that does bring in the master plan implementation committee in that regard, but, you know, clearly there's something that needs to be done in some capacity, but just trying to figure out what's the right approach and, you know, I certainly don't want to rush that necessarily, but it seems to be coming to a head in these multiple, just having this many proposals come up, it just seems like there are multiple facets or, you know, need, there seems to be some sort of need here for us to take a closer look at development and planning and all of that, but I'm sure the master plan implementation committee is, okay.
Yeah, so, the applicant is bringing forward to you, he's giving you examples from a different region within the, within Massachusetts, right?
Right.
You sort of want to look like regionally, are you seeing it happen here, right? So the North Shore, right next to the, you know, water is a lot of different, lots of land in the way thing is versus down here, but I, I get what he's trying to say, how he's trying to do that. It's not unusual that you have people who have large parcels of land that want to develop them. Whether you see that now, you're gonna see that going on for many years, because people know the value of land, right? It's what the residents of Northborough want to see and how much they want to see in a, in a densely populated area, which is RC. And so that's what you're talking about is, what do the people, what are the residents of Northborough, how they want to see RC developed out? So I think that question's gonna come before, because now you've shown that even you've got twenty-three potential parcels, maybe more if you look at the other ones that are not single-family, that could be actually built out, and how does a town want to handle that? And I do think if you rush it now, it's not gonna be done properly, and it is something for the master plan to look at over time. You know, but to what Anthony was saying, this parcel can be developed out for two families, or they could, the guy said he could do duplexes, or, or he could possibly see if he could get a third one. You know, but there are potentials for this property already. Maybe not his vision, but there's potentials under the current zoning that he could easily develop this property.
Okay.
Carrie, if I could add to the, the, you know, yes, you, you, you know, you have two parcels that were, you know, brought to you kind of, you know, like boom, boom, you know, the, the, you know, side by side or simultaneously, but if you, you know, if you, if you look back over the years, it's, you know, this is not a, this is not a common occurrence. And, and, and part of the reason why zoning boards of appeals exist is to consider dimensional variances, you know? It's not just use variances, you know, again, use variances aren't as popular, but, you know, zoning boards of appeals across Massachusetts, that's one of their purposes, is to look at dimensional variances. So, so if somebody has a piece of property that doesn't quite fit into the zoning, and they want to propose to do something different on it, that, there's an avenue, you know, that, that neither one of these landowners have pursued. Now, you know, they don't have to pursue it, but, but that is an avenue that does exist as opposed to a board looking at, you know, changing, you know, their, their zoning bylaw, you know, wholesale. You may want to do that. You may want to look at, at it wholesale. You may want to increase density. You may want to introduce some other kinds of zoning into single-family, you know, into single-family neighborhoods. But, you know, kind of historically, you know, Northborough is very much a single-family, you know, community. And, you know, largely made up of, you know, residential properties. And then the, the other thing is the, you know, the, available to, to both of these landowners as well as other landowners is the subdivision process. You know, so it's not as if landowners are without any recourse, you know, if you don't, if you don't have the cookie cutter lot, then you know, you're out of commission. That's not true. I mean, there's, again, there's the subdivision process, there's the dimensional variance process. And, but historically, zoning boards of appeals, including the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals, has not in the past looked favorably upon the only reason why you need a dimensional variance is for your economic gain. No, that's not what a dimensional variance is about. You know, variances are supposed to be based on, you know, the, the three standards, you know, it's either soil type, topography, or shape. And, you know, and those can all be massaged, as, again, as every community does, but I just didn't want to, you know, I, I want to leave you with the fact that, you know, there are options today. You know, instead of you feeling pressured to, to change the zoning right now, there are options available to, to applicants, you know, other than just a standard approval not required law.
Got it. Okay, so I actually have to depart the meeting, so for the purpose of the minutes, Carrie is leaving the meeting and Amy will be taking the, over his chair for the duration of the meeting. I know we have, I'm gonna move along if nobody has anything else to the rezoning of thirty-seven South Street, and I see Attorney Pember in the audience. Amy, do you want me to bring George over?
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, George, I'm bringing over by surprise just before I leave. So in any case, I am going to depart the meeting at this point. Kathy, I will talk to you over the next couple of weeks, I'm sure.
I'll be here to the end of the month.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, so I don't believe it will impact the meeting at all. Jim, I can just leave. I'm a co-host, but you're still a host, so it won't have any impact on the meeting?
Yep, yep, you're all set. Have a good one.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Bye.
Bye, Carrie.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is George Pember rezoning of thirty-seven South Street. Hi, George.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Good. So I was asked to come back because the planning board wanted some additional feedback. And I believe the feedback you're looking for is reaction to the neighbors. And I had a conversation with Ken Hunt yesterday, as a matter of fact. Ken is the immediate butter. And his react, his reaction was basically, I have no problem with what he's trying to do. It's fine with me. No, no, no big deal. So he was, he was comfortable with it.
Okay. Do you have anything else that you're bringing forward tonight?
No, no.
Does the board have any questions for George? Or staff?
Amy, the only thing, I mean, if this is, I mean, actually, it's, you know, it's not gonna fall to me. But if, you know, is this something that the board wants to propose as, as a zoning bylaw? As opposed to, you know, a citizen's petition? So, so if it's something that the board, you know, is in agreement about rezoning this parcel, then, you know, I'll, just include it on the list and, and, you know, get through what I can, you know, by the end of the month. So I just, I'm just looking for direction on that.
Okay. Well, I guess one of the comments I had was, you know, we're in the master plan implementation committee right now, and one of the first agendas is the downtown. And the biggest discussion is what is the downtown and defining the downtown? And when I was thinking about it, if we're gonna go through defining the downtown this year, it's the number one thing that we're doing, then this might, this site may be able to be added right onto the zoning map as part of that without having to go to town meeting this year and being spot zoning. Because I guess spot zoning was brought up last meeting, and, you know, we don't really want to set a precedent for spot zoning. I understand that this lot is a little different because it was divided and it must have fallen through the cracks, but, but instead of doing it a separate route, maybe we want to think about doing it as part of defining the downtown. And then it's not all at once, and it doesn't stand out as spot zoning.
It, just, just to let everyone know, this, this wouldn't be considered spot zoning. I mean, obviously, you know, the board can decide where and when they want to propose this if, if you do, but, but this wouldn't be spot zoning. Spot zoning would be more like, say, and this is just an exaggeration, but, you know, a, a, a house in the middle of, of the Northgate neighborhood. You know, it would come, it wants to be rezoned to a commercial, you know, business so they can put a gas station in there. Or it's, it's, you know, they want to rezone it to industrial because someone has approached them about, you know, doing, I mean, again, these are very far-fetched, but that would be spot zoning because there, there's nothing like it. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't mix in with, with the existing land uses, and it's just one, you know, one parcel that is, is being singled out surrounded by a completely different zone. This particular, you know, and again, I, I, this is not a, a for or against this proposal, but this is, this is a property that, you know, has been zoned downtown business in the past. And then it was a split zone, and then when, when we did the rezoning in two thousand and nine, and I don't remember the, you know, the specific discussions about this parcel, but for whatever reason, it was, we talked about eliminating split zones, split parcels. And for whatever reason, you know, this went into the, you know, residential zone as opposed to the business zone, when in fact, you know, this property has been used as, as a business for, or at least as long as I can remember, but, you know, that's going back over thirty years. But just to, just to clarify, this wouldn't be considered spot zoning, so, so you don't have to worry about that. But, you know, however else you want to consider it, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So as the planner, do you know how long you think the defining of the downtown will take as part of the master plan? It's, we already brought forth our scope, and I know that was the first thing discussed. And if it's going to be done pretty soon, then it just makes sense to do it all at once.
I, I mean, it, it's, there, there's many, there's, there's many facets in, involved in, in what we're going to be doing, you know, as a community for, for a, a downtown study, and, you know, bringing in a consultant to, you know, there's, there's gonna be several elements to that, to that plan. And part of that discussion will be, you know, again, do, are, do people want to expand, contract? You know, what, whatever it is about the physical limits of downtown. Personally, I don't, this, this one particular parcel that has been in the downtown business before and is, and is adjacent to downtown business, you know, existing downtown business, again, I don't, I don't see the harm in, in this one particular parcel, but, you know, that's the bird, that's, that's the board's, you know, purview, if you, if you wanted to wait for the bigger picture of, you know, hiring the, the consultant to work on the downtown plan. I, I would anticipate, Amy, that, that changes from that downtown plan maybe, maybe available for the next town meeting, for the twenty-twenty-three town meeting, but, but it, you know, it, it all depends on, it, it, from what I understand, the, you know, we, we don't have the scope yet of what the, of what the downtown study would be. So, and I, and I don't believe you're gonna have the scope for the next meeting of the implementation committee, which is on the sixteenth. So, so again, now, you know, you're into January for, for potentially, you know, reviewing a scope.
I guess I have one or two more questions for George, if no one else has any questions. I was just wondering, George, do you know how many variances they've had to ask for so far? Since two thousand and nine?
No, I don't. I'm aware of one that we got about two years ago, and I personally got it for them. But I'm not aware of how many they've had in the past.
Okay. And I think the only other house close by that's residential is, I think the Leland's across the street, the big house on the corner.
Right.
Is residential. I guess to consider it, I'd like to see a, a letter in writing from both the Hunts and the Leland's, like, that they're okay with it. Like, I know you said you talked to the Hunts, but I think it would be important to get it in writing.
Okay.
That they're okay with it. I don't know what other board members think. Are there any butters on the backside? Or are they all downtown business already?
The railroad track is in the back.
Guess we don't have to talk to them.
The only thing I would say is, so, and I, all along, I kind of was like, well, it's been operating this way for whatever it's been, thirty or forty years. What's the big deal? But the only thing that got to me today was it was almost specifically carved out. If it's been operating that way, why wasn't it carved in? And is there some reason or something we're just not considering at this point? And I have to agree with Amy. I think it would probably be better if we, we let the implementation committee consider this rather than do this now, just take a deeper dive.
So I guess my feeling is that we're trying to correct an error. We're not trying to add to the downtown. We're trying to correct an error. When the zoning came through, no one realized that a, a building that had been used commercially for, as you point out, thirty or forty years, I would say probably longer because it was, it's actually used commercially back in nineteen fifty-five, so that's a long time. It was just an error. It was an oversight to not include that in the business district. So we're, we're not asking for special treatment for a parcel. We're asking for correction of an error.
I did go back and read all the minutes from two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. And I guess Kathy had mentioned, in the minutes, it said that all of the affected parcels received a letter, and they were invited to meetings. So maybe they missed the meeting or didn't read the letter. Somehow it dropped through the cracks.
Yeah, most likely that's the case, Amy.
But I did see also on the assessor, it was built in nineteen seventy-two, so.
No, there was an addition built in seventy-two. That's correct.
And I looked back to nineteen sixty-eight, and it didn't list that thirty-seven South Street. So I didn't know if it was just a piece of land that was built on in seventy-two. I was trying to get to the bottom of it, just to see what happened, because it might have.
That house has been there for years and years and years. A Dr. Bush was the owner in fifty-five when he opened up his medical practice there, and then Bob Gabriel came along in the, I think, late sixties and started his law practice. And when his nephew, Dick Gabriel, graduated from law school, Dick joined him at that site. And then over time, other attorneys started practicing in that building. That's why they put the addition on. So it's been used commercially. The Dr. Bush started it way back in nineteen fifty-five. And it's been pretty much continuous use of, of some kind of a commercial use ever since. And it's been pretty much continuous use of, of some kind of a commercial use ever since. So it should, when, when the, when the zoning took, when the rezoning took place, that should have been. Included and it's an oversight not to have concluded it. Perhaps someone missed a letter and, and shame on them if they did. But the point is that, you know, it, it. It's not something that's residential, we're trying to make commercial, it's something that's commercial, we want to keep it commercial. And we're asking the planning board to take a positive stance on that, not kick the can down the road.
Okay, so, um. It seems like a reasonable request to me and there was a lot of rezoning done back then. I don't know even, Amy, were you even on the planning board back then? So.
No, I just went back and read all the minutes.
So it was just a huge, and there, I mean. There were so many people still on the boards who were a part of that. Um, I'm assuming if we could hear from staff about their feedback on. How we should um, advise on moving forward on this. Uh, because all the three staff members or at least two staff members are here during the rezoning part of this.
Sure, I'll just, I'll just reiterate that, that I, um. I do think it was um, a, a, a mistake or an overlook when it was done in two thousand and nine because. Again, you know, I just, just using my longevity as, as an example. Um, I've been here over thirty years and that has always been a commercial property. Um, I've never known it to be used for anything else other than the law office. Um, I wasn't born in nineteen fifty-five. Not aware of Dr. Bush, but um, but I'm certainly aware of, you know, from the nineties on, um, that that's been used commercially, so. It, it, it's such a, it's such a small parcel to me and it, and it just makes sense that it's part of the downtown business. Um, I don't, you know, again, I, I don't see anything negative. Um, resulting from, from proposing a rezoning of this, it just, it, it makes sense to me. Um, but again, you know, it's, it's, it's up to the board how they want to handle this, but. I don't, I don't see this as a big, you know, sore thumb sticking out there that, you know, if you rezone this. Uh, you know, fifteen other landowners are gonna be in line to say, hey, I want to be rezoned too. I mean, thi- this is, there's evidence in the assessor's office, you know, how this property has been used commercially. Um, and it, and it just makes sense, you know, um, for, for any future owner of that property or, or renter. Um, for it to be in the, in the downtown business district.
I, you know, I think that if we were to get that letter from Mr. Hunt in writing. I, I don't think I have a problem with seeing this being done as a rezone. I don't think, you know, to Kathy's point, I don't think it seems to, to be a big, huge deal. Did you say Kathy that he could also present this as a citizen's petition? If we didn't come to an agreement on that?
Yeah, if the, I mean, typically when, when someone. You know, engages with the planning board about wanting to do a zoning change. There, and I, and I'm not, you know, I'm not speaking for Mr. Pember, I'm not, I don't mean to be putting words in his mouth, but. Typically, when someone approaches the planning board, you know, they're looking for the planning board to include it in, in the planning board's packet of. Of zoning proposals, you know, if, if there are some going forward that year, so um. So that it, it's, you know, it co- it's coming from the board.
Yeah.
Um, you know, citizens petitions, I mean, they, they certainly have their role, but it's. You know, what, what we try to do when someone talks about a citizen's petition is we try to encourage them. Over the years, you know, to come work with the planning board, you know?
Okay.
Let, let's not just do legislation by, you know, getting ten se- signatures, let's do, you know. Legislation and regulation change by, you know, working with the board and, and incorporating it into the board's. Um, you know, ph- philosophy and, and their proposals.
Mm-hmm, okay.
In addition, I just want to say, not to advocate for that, but. Um, you would al- they would also at town meeting, ask all the other boards, committees and commissions, how do they feel or endorse about it?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, if the planning, um, in this case, if they haven't been able to review it, all the other committees. There's no endorsement and they usually don't fly because the residents of Northborough are looking to the planning board. You know, to help um, resolve some of these issues. I deal with land use all the time and it is not uncommon to have an error occur somewhere. You know, on the, the land records and in this case. It has been always determined as to be a commercial use over all those years, being billed and. Um, to the assessor's office and someone picked it up and they're just trying to clarify it. I agree with Kathy, this is not spot zoning either. That's a word that can be thrown around a lot, but this is not.
It was just mentioned at the last meeting, that's why I brought it up. But I, I would, I wouldn't, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't in favor of this to coming forth today, but I would like to see. A letter from the abutters. You know, north, south and across the street. Because those are all the direct abutters.
The butter to the no- uh.
It's a business, but you'd still like to get the abutters approval.
Okay.
You know, I'm just.
Are you saying, Amy, you want to see the abutters? Um, next door and then the Leland's across the street, just those two abutters, correct?
And the Hunts.
And that's just the two abutters.
Yeah, the three abutters, the three direct abutters to the parcel.
Okay, and then based on that, I mean, to help Mr. Pember, based on that, is the board willing to move forward and then just vote on this? And the uh, yes in favor?
In January. Sure, in January, I just, my main thing was to see how close we were to having the downtown re-lined. Because we could do it all at once or to have a letter from the director butters. And I wanted to make sure to see when this actually became, you know, commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I would, I'd agree if, I mean, if we can get a, a letter from. Whatever abutters there are in acceptance of this, then I think it's fine.
Alright, uh, so I appreciate it then if you could put this on the agenda for your next meeting.
Sure.
Then I'll, I'll.
January fourth.
Letters.
January fourth would be the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And we could add that. And I think um, bylaws are due. February third, I think.
Yes.
Okay. Yep. So maybe Kathy, you could add it to the list.
Mm-hmm.
In assumption that he's gonna be able to get all the three letters.
Yep.
If everybody agrees.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, George, yep.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have the other warrant articles that we've been discussing. Going back to August. Um, I'll go down a list, Carrie sent out a list today or the other day. I don't know if everybody saw that list. But from what I have on the list was um, breweries. And that was one that I brought forward and I actually did pull together ideas today. Cause I've done this over and over again. But I went back and I looked at all my information. And let me just find it. And I can write it for January unless Kathy. You have time to put something together before our next meeting.
It, well, Amy, do you have, um, I mean, I, I have your, the examples that you had. You know, provided to the board in the past, so if there, is there one in particular that, that everyone's looking at or?
Um, okay.
Or are you looking at, you know, c- combining, you know, bits and pieces from each one or?
Well, I think where we left at last, you were gonna reach out to different towns because we were talking about the barrels, I guess. There are so many barrels that different towns allow. And there are three type of breweries that I've found in all the towns, there's a nano brewery, a micro brewery. And a plain brewery and the nano goes up to six thousand barrels. And a barrel is thirty-one gallons. And then a micro brewery from what I've found in towns like Shrewsbury, Grafton. Have fifteen thousand barrels. And then the other brewery, which would have no specifics. Would be something that would go in more of an industrial area because it didn't have a specific set of the amount of barrels that could be sold a year.
And what, and what was that, was, was there a specific name to that, Amy?
Uh, it was just called. Brewery.
Okay.
So if you go to Shrewsbury, and I can send it to you after the meeting and maybe we can all discuss it right now. Um, Shrewsbury passed in August twenty twenty. To allow in their new town center district. Um, micro breweries which go up to fifteen thousand barrels. They also allowed the nano brewery that goes up to six thousand barrels. So I don't know, I was wondering, we have to decide where in town we want to allow these to. And, and I was thinking if it's gonna be downtown. It would probably be the smaller one, the six thousand barrels, because we don't really want a lot of probably trucks and traffic. Delivering kegs of beer throughout town. But I guess one thing Kathy, I think you were gonna ask, um, like Cold Harbor Brewery and. Medusa, how many barrels approximately?
They are, okay, alright, I'm, I'm sorry if I said I was gonna do that and I didn't, so. Um, I can definitely check with them.
Yeah, because those are near town centers. Just to give an idea of how many barrels of beer, I have no idea how much.
Is the Medusa, is that the one in Hudson?
Yeah, yes.
Medusa?
Yep. Yep, there's Medusa and Ground Effect is in Hudson. But for January, I could send it out to everybody again. And maybe Kathy, you can get. Some of the information about how many barrels of beer, the downtown. But if you want me to read, there's a pretty basic definition that all the towns use and I'll send it to everybody again. But it's a facility licensed under the relevant state and federal statutes. For the production and packaging of malt, wine or hard cider, so it includes all three. For distribution, retail or wholesale, on or off the premises with the capacity of not more than fifteen thousand barrels. Per year, a barrel being equivalent to thirty-one gallons. And which may include a tap room where beverages produced on the premises may be sold and consumed. And one thing that Shrewsbury included that some of the other towns didn't. It said may include outdoor dining if otherwise. permitted in the zoning. I don't know what Northborough, do we allow outdoor dining?
Yeah, you, you, we do and um, and it's through the Board of Selectmen. It would be part of their liquor license.
Yep.
And then it also, um, the building department is involved as far as um, uh, seating capacity.
So most of the, the definitions throughout Grafton and um, Shrewsbury and. I think I worked at Midway and Fermiham, they're all pretty similar. And it, the only difference is whether they call out licensed under relevant state and federal statutes. Or they actually call out the statute, which is like one thirty-nine dash something. So um, I guess for me, the biggest decision was how many barrels do we want to allow?
And, and where, i- i- are, are you all, you know, I mean, ha- has that been? I mean, I missed your, you know, your November meeting, but I don't know if that was discussed or not, I, did you? Or are you thinking this for, you know, all the commercial districts?
Um, well, for me, what I would throw would be the smaller one downtown. And then for Business West and Business East, maybe the bigger one. But that's just my idea. I don't know how the other board members feel, and then if you really want to open it up to industrial too, you can. Either add a micro brewery, so it's not so big because um, we ha- do have residential. Near our industrial. Or we can do what the other towns do and just call it a brewery and they don't have a maximum amount.
So, I mean, I don't know, you know, whether the board's ready to, you know, decide that tonight or.
Right, I'm hoping we can actually all decide at the beginning of. January and our January fourth meeting, because the ZBA mentioned that they would come to one of our meetings in January and if we could. Come to decisions on all of our bylaws for January fourth, then we could have the finals typed up to give to the ZBA on the fifteenth. So Amy, I'm just kind of quickly looking online, because I knew I'd gotten this information before, but um, Medusa. It, as of two thousand and nineteen, was producing fifteen hundred barrels. Oh, fifteen hundred, so it's pretty small. It's pretty small, but there, we're looking to expand into Holliston, so. Um. And some don't even have a number attached to it. I just thought a number, which some of the towns did, actually said at least the max limit. For now. And six thousand seems like the nano brewery number that people have chosen. And I think Kathy, you said you've seen the fifteen thousand, six thousand around.
Yeah, that kind of is. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know how they were arrived at, but it seems to be the, the standard that people go by. So I don't know if it's the kind of equipment, you know, if you have to change equipment or you need different kind of equipment or. Uh, different kinds of material, if you go over six thou- I don't, you know, I don't know, but. But.
Maybe. We start off small and just do the nano brewery in Business East, Business West and Downtown Business. You know, versus doing the fifteen thousand, start off with six and if someone comes in that. Wants to ask for more, they could go in front of the ZBA.
Kathy, how does this tie with liquor licenses? Do you, um, does a town have liquor licenses that if someone came in could actually? Apply for it, are there any open, are they town limited to a certain amount of liquor licenses?
I honestly don't know, I mean, and I can check that out with um. With the, you know, the Board of Selectmen tomorrow, um, with their, you know, executive assistant. Um, she handles all their liquor licenses, so I don't know if they're, um, if they're part of the. Existing liquor licenses, you know, that's all based on population for a community or, or are. Or are these licenses like a, a completely separate category? I, I don't know and I can, you know, I'll certainly inquire about that.
So I think it's important to, um, with this bylaw to take that into consideration as well, it's not. I would assume that you'd need something.
Yep, well, Texas barbecue just, is looking for a new owner, so if someone came in, there's probably an extra. Could be an extra license there, who knows?
So I think it's up to the, if we can get some accurate information from the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Kathy, that would be great.
Yep, yep, I'll follow up on that.
Okay, and tomorrow I can send out the, the three definitions I was just discussing. And then we can come up with the size. And a location. Okay, um. I'm gonna skip over to another one that we've talked about, which is commercial and industrial. And I think if anyone has any commercial uses they'd like to discuss, we'll probably have to be ready for January fourth. But one of my suggestions is um, right now in front of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. There's a market analysis being done of downtown, or at least it's on the agenda that they hope to do a market analysis. Of what could be done downtown. And since we don't have an economic development committee currently. If the planning board would agree, I was thinking maybe we could send an email to that. MPIC and ask for a market analysis done on the industrial districts at the same time. So it would come back with best views or maybe. Different uses that we could allow in our industrial zones. I'm not sure what anybody would think about that.
So Amy, you're suggesting that the town. You hire a consultant to do a market analysis for potential commercial uses in an industrial area. For this.
Or even just a market analysis of the industrial, other industrial.
For this year's town meeting. Don't you think it would be better to just start the process of. Making the suggestion as you're making the discussion, having the discussion. To then make that suggestion to the master plan if they agree on it. There's just gonna be a lot of information and a lot of sifting through on what's gonna work and what's not. I don't think it's as simple to get it done by the end of January for this year's town meeting.
No, that wasn't my, that wasn't what I was saying.
I know what you're saying, but I thought you were talking about this year's town meeting.
No, no, I was just saying, at our next meeting, we're talking about the scope of what we're gonna ask for from consultants. And one of the things on the list is a market analysis for downtown. And while they're hiring a market and if, and when they hire a market analysis for downtown. Maybe we could add in a market analysis for the industrial zones, it wouldn't be for this year's town meeting. But it would give us the information we would need for next year's town meeting, the year after.
Okay, so we're talking about this year's bylaws, so you, you're not gonna bring commercial uses in industrial for this year's. Okay, so we're talking about this year's bylaws, so you, you're not gonna bring commercial uses in industrial for this year's bylaws, correct?
Well, what I asked is that if anybody else has any commercial uses that they'd like to suggest. We could bring them forth in January, but I didn't have any, so my suggestion was to go through the master plan. To see if they could do a market analysis. But I think it might take a memo from the Planning Board to ask them to do a market analysis as part of the other market analysis. You know, because right now they're focusing on downtown. It could be years before we focus on industrial, but while they're hiring someone from. A downtown market analysis, it might not be a bad idea to do the industrial zones since we've been discussing those for quite a while.
Amy, is that, is that written as one of the recommendations under industrial in the master plan?
On the master plan? I have to go back and look, but I'm pretty sure analyzing, we've talked about looking into the industrial zones too. And they talked about it back, when I went back to read my meeting minutes in, back in two thousand and eight, they were talking about it when they redid the zoning. So I don't have the master plan in front of me, but I know there's a section on the industrial development.
Right, I was looking to see, I guess I was just, I can check and see if it's one of the actions or recommendations or goals.
Yeah, I was just bringing up because I know, you know, we've talked about what type of commercial uses we could bring in. And it might be good to hear from someone who, who does it. As a consultant, to give us the ideas. We were once, like, I guess I've said it before, but CMRPC once said to me, you guys could do better. But I never get the information is, what can we do better, you know, what is the ideas?
So I would just table that to the January meeting, Amy, so that, um, the chair can also reply to that, and. We can go back and look at the master plan with regards to industrial.
Mm-hmm, okay, but in January fourth, if anybody else has an idea of a commercial use they wanna bring forward, that's. That was one of my, that's where I started. Okay. So. The next on the list were ware- warehousing and trucking moratoriums. Or, and use variances, and Carrie also sent out a, a memo. And it included some draft examples of definitions and moratoriums. I'm not sure people had time to review it, so my suggestion with that, with that, people could go back, or board members could go back. Review what was sent out in an email, and we could come ready to discuss and make decisions on January fourth, because the same. And the same comment is, um, Carrie's not here tonight, so I think we better to do when she's here too.
So I would make some, I'd like to make some comments on this, Amy, because on Carrie's. Um, email to the board, uh, she states that you drafted this bylaw. Um, specifically to warehouses and trucking, so, um, and this seems to be all of your language here. So some of the questions that I would have for you who drafted it, uh, would be, um, more of. So if you're going to, um, make the argument about why there should be a moratorium. I think you need to make the argument about what's the problem. Okay, so that's the first thing, since you've drafted this, I don't think you've drafted that. What the problem is not drafted in here. Secondly, um, when you talk about an increase in tractor traffic. What study was done and where's the data on that? Can you talk to that now, or is that just something you just put in?
Sure, um, I actually, we've been talking about it since when we started talking about bylaws, we've been talking about warehouses and trucking. So to help the board, I actually tried to draft some moratoriums if we decide to go that route. I also had a path if we wanted to just change definitions. So I haven't decided which route to go, I just wanted to give examples to the board to go forward. So in the top of the email with the three definitions, and the first path was to revisit our definitions. For trucking and warehousing. And I used the Sutton definitions, they worked with CMRPC to rewrite theirs, so that's why I pulled theirs. As far as the bylaws for warehouses and the moratorium. I used the moratoriums that were used for our solar bylaw, our duplex bylaw, I used. The bylaws that we've always used in the past.
But Amy, what I'm asking, the question I'm asking is, where's your data?
Well, with the, um, three hundred, no, it wasn't three hundred, zero Bartlett. He did say if there was gonna be more traffic, right in the traffic study, if there's gonna be more trucks and traffic. That there would have to be a light on Lyman Street, and that would have to come under consideration. I just wanted to draft.
I guess what I would say from the board is, some of these are pretty strong comments with not a lot of data behind it. So if you're going to, first you have to identify the problem, you have to support it with some data. And then you have to find out any business implications to it. Um, and so that's what I would probably go, I think that's what your responsibility is for writing a moratorium bylaw. For the public, to make sure that you have, not giving them misinformation, okay? I also think when you're doing a moratorium, it's good to look around your neighboring communities rather than just sort of cherry pick one that you like out in Sutton. So you might like looking at, like, you know, what does Southborough do, what does Westborough do, what does Shrewsbury do? You know, regionally, we share the same. So, but when I read this, one of the things I, I was thinking about is what's the problem? And then where's the data to support it? And so that's what I would be looking for as a planning board member.
Okay, well, the purpose of the moratorium is to get all that data and reach out to the regional. That was what, like, when we went forth with solar bylaw and the duplex bylaws, it was to look into it further.
The solar bylaw was, there was no, there was no solar. There was nothing, you have a, an existing bylaw that's working and functioning now, which the question is, what's the problem? With solar, there was nothing.
Okay, well, I've heard a lot of concerns about problems in town.
Okay, so I think when you're doing a moratorium, you have to, um, identify the problem. Um, obviously staff would give input of whether the problem actually physically exists or is somewhat inflated. And then where's the data to make sure that the data actually exists to support the problem?
The data is what you get when you do the moratorium, like we did when we did the duplex bylaw. And the duplex moratorium. Was there a post occupancy traffic study done from zero Bartlett? I don't know, we just had the walk.
There will be one done. Um, that, that's part of the, um, the whole process that Central Mass is going through. Um, with DPW, so they, you know, the, the neighborhood or the, the safety audit was just completed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that information will become part of the, the post occupancy report that, that, um, Amazon will be doing.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, well, these were just thrown out there, and they were sent out in email this week, and I thought. That we could discuss them on January fourth, and it'd be great if everybody could read it, and we can all come back with comments.
Mm-hmm.
And then when Carrie's back, she can have her comments too. I was just trying to help, because we've talked about it, what we wanna do going forward, so I took the time to write the bylaws. If we were gonna go forward, not saying we do, we don't, I just wanted to have them ready to go with whatever we decide to do. Okay. So. Use variances on there too, it was part of that same email. We can review for January fourth. The next one on the list was enforcement. And, um, I shared that at the last meeting with everybody. And, um, I think Bob, you had mentioned you wanted to run it by Town Council, I don't know if you had a chance to do that. Okay. Maybe before January fourth? We could do that.
No mute.
You're gonna read, you're gonna need to send me the, uh, criteria and the question you, you want answers for, uh, we just did. An enforcement bylaw at the last town meeting. Uh, which is modeled after just about all the other towns that have an enforcement bylaw. So, uh, to be honest with you, I did not go to Town Council with it, and I'm gonna need to refresh it in terms of what information you actually need.
Okay, I didn't, because we went into such detail about it last meeting, I didn't plan on speaking to it this meeting. I can pull it up again if we want to. Or I can just resend it to Bob. I think it'd be better if people just go back, it's the same thing I talked about at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can review it and decide if we wanna go forth in January, I can resend it to Bob, the information.
Yeah, that's fine.
I hate to go through it all again.
So Amy, just, just to clarify for, um, for, for me, the, eh, did you propose a bylaw at the last meeting?
Yes.
Well, okay.
And I talked about it in advance, and I was, it was about enforcement, and. I mean, I really didn't prepare to go through it again today.
But is it, is it different than the enforcement bylaw?
It is, it's adding to what Bob had, it's not changing what was added last year. Last year, we added that the fines would be three hundred. This was actually just giving Bob more. Specific language, and. I can send you the link to the, I can try to pull it up, or I can send you the link to our meeting, last meeting.
Oh, no, I, I, I don't.
If we had the minutes, I could read it too, I went through a lot of detail.
Mm-hmm, well, I, I mean, I, I can, I can check the minutes too, but I mean, I, if you had language, you know.
Yep.
Just forward that language to us, and maybe you've already done that, but if you can just send it again.
I forwarded it to Bob and Fred after, the day after the meeting. But I can forward it to you too after this meeting.
So is, is the, um. You know, and I, and I guess people will say, well, why am I asking, because I won't be here in January? Um, but are, is, is the intent of the board that? That your first meeting in January is when you'll decide which articles you wanna go forward with to town meeting? Is that?
That's what I was planning.
Okay.
Because we're running out of time.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, that's all, Amy, thank you.
Yep, and, um, after tonight's meeting, maybe tomorrow I can send all the bylaws again that we've discussed over the past few months. That would be helpful. Yep, I can put it all in one sheet, thank you, yeah.
I'm assuming that Amy, uh, Carrie had listed nine here. So you're talking about the nine that Carrie listed in her memo to the board?
Yep.
The chair sent out, okay, so we're just sort of going down this list?
We're going down the list, yeah, to see if anybody has anything to add. I. I'm not gonna send anything about number nine, which is the OSRD in thirty-seven South Street in ninety-one Brigham, because we're gonna talk about that in January. Number eight was a staff-driven by law request, home occupation, fence height, from Bob, flood language from Fred. Do we have anything in writing? On those?
I do not have any language for you to get on the, uh, flood plain bylaw, but I do have some, uh, documentation that we got late last year from. The state, which I will put into a. Format suitable for town meeting, if you like, I'll try to do that for January fourth.
That'd be great, thanks.
So Fred, that's specifically zoning, a zoning change?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
And then Bob had one about fence height.
Mm-hmm.
You think for January fourth, Bob?
If I can keep my head above water, that would be a nice thing to do.
Okay, I know, I'm trying to. Okay. So number seven, I'm kinda going backwards now.
If we can go back to the staff one, what's on the home occupation?
It has something to do with vehicles.
One of the, one of the questions we have is, we currently have. An allowance on home occupation of two commercial vehicles, but we don't have anywhere else in the zoning code. Where if somebody happens to be working. For a company, can he take his commercial vehicle home?
That's a good point, that's a good point.
And I, because we had a situation like that. Not so long ago, and I just kinda had to weigh it by, say, the only other reference I have is two vehicles, so I said, let's go with two vehicles and. Let the chips fall where they may, um, that was the only reasonable thing I could come up with. Um, so, you know, we're, I'm gonna be asking for the, for the board to, you know. You know, make a call on that one.
Are you recommending that they suggest to add in the home, um? If someone should bring home their vehicle, that's like through a company, that'd be in a lot of juice?
Yeah.
Okay, it makes sense with the change in how the environment is anyways.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these people, you know, a, a lot of these, you know, contractors and companies or whatever, they bring home a vehicle because it's safer. In, in their employee's yard than it is in some. You know, some other big giant parking lot someplace, plus it offers, offers the opportunity, if you're an employee, to be on call twenty-four seven. You know, there, there's a whole host of reasons why people are sending company vehicles home.
Exactly.
And I just, you know, we had a question about, well, how many are allowed? And I says, well, it's certainly not a whole fleet, um, you know, we're thinking, you know, one, maybe two. You know, keeping in mind that if it's a. If by chance it's a, I hate to say it, but a landscaper with a pickup truck and a trailer, can you bring that home? You know, that's, that's one of the things, that's one of the questions I've been asked, so.
Does anybody have any input on this right now? That they'd like to add before Bob goes into detail with the bylaw? I have some, I actually have a question, so this is just for a residential home, not a home occupation you're talking about?
Right, because the vehicle limit is already in a home occupation.
Mm-hmm, so if you allow one, like, say someone drives for mass electric, and they bring home their big truck.
Right.
And, um. Does that mean they could now have three, but they don't really have a home office, they just. You know, they live there and they bring their car home.
They were an employee, they don't have a home office, they're not running a whole business.
Yeah.
Work for the utility. Utility authorizes them to take the vehicle home.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that, would that be allowed, and does the planning board wanna put a weight or a size limit on that vehicle?
I think that would be important, that was one of the, the things on the. Top of my head. And also.
Maybe instead of just doing a weight or size limit, because maybe what you'd wanna do is just allow to have one vehicle brought home. Uh, instead of two, but. Do you know what I mean? I mean, uh, the world is just. The world has just changed as far as, um, people going to the office or. Whatever, and more and more people I can see around town have their, their, um. Cars there that they're bringing home, or small trucks, or whatever it is. I think it's a, a good business-friendly thing to do, and I'm not objecting to it.
I think if it's unlimited for weight and size, it could lead to a problem, because you're saying that, that if someone drove. As a contractor for Amazon and had an eighteen wheeler, and they parked it out in front of their house, it would be fine?
Well, you, you, like I said before, if you wanna go for a weight limit, it'd say something like, I'm just throwing this out there, twenty-six thousand pounds. Um, that's a straight truck, it's a box truck, you know, about, about twenty-four feet, you know, it's not an eighteen wheeler. Um, a lot of those big utility pole-type vehicles from the grid, those are close to forty thousand pounds.
Yeah.
Um. You know, when you, when you consider that a, consider that a fully loaded pumper, pumping fire truck. Is a, is between forty-five and sixty thousand pounds. Okay, that, that's, that's a little problem, I'm thinking that's probably a little big for what you'd wanna see in the neighborhoods. Okay, that, that's, that's a little prob- I'm thinking that's probably a little big for what you'd wanna see in the neighborhoods. You know? You know, one ton dump truck.
That you suggested, Bob?
Twenty-six thousand pounds is typically a um. A, a, a number I can confer with the um. The, the, the town engineers and, and see where the, the breakout comes in terms of vehicle type and size.
So that's a good visual to use when you're presented at town meeting to say it's about the half the size of a. A fire truck or half the size of a eighteen wheeler.
Yeah, I mean, it's wheelers, an eighteen wheeler typically is eighty thousand pounds.
Yeah.
You know, your, your triaxle dump trucks, um, straight trucks, those are typically eighty to ninety thousand pounds.
Really? Wow. And I, I think a lot of it too depends on like, the neighborhood and the driveway size, like. Like maybe a utility type truck is okay if you've got a big enough driveway and big enough. Yard, if you have one of them, but if you're in a small neighborhood, then it's out of place, like, is there any? Part of the bylaw that talks about having the appropriate parking spot, like.
And, and, any. Any parking requirement, especially for residential, is required to have off-street parking. Okay, it does not have to be on a paved surface in residenials.
Oh, so it could be off-street, so like their side yard?
Right.
Okay. I guess that's something for everybody to think about for January fourth, but um. I, I thank you for the visual too, what, forty thousand pounds, eighty thousand pounds, twenty-six thousand pounds? And there's, so there's no way to say it has to be parked. On a paved driveway?
There is no requirement for a paved driveway. In a residential setting in Northborough. So if you wanna build a million-dollar house and wanna gravel driveway, technically you can do that.
But if we're allowing a large truck to be parked in someone's yard, can you make it part of the bylaw that it does have to be parked?
I think that's, I think that's gonna be burdensome.
I don't know. Could it, it, you're saying then Bob, that it could also be basically on the road front?
No.
Oh, it can't be?
Residential parking needs to be off-street.
Off-street, okay. I thought you said on-street. I was like, oh, boy.
It's off-street, it could be a gravel park. Some people use crushed stone or whatever.
Uh, just to give you some perspective on this, you know, and not, not to make. Um, this overly complicated, um, you know, I certainly understand, you know, like Bob said, he's, he's received some questions lately. Um, but i- in, in all honesty, I only recall one time. One time so far, that, that a neighbor complained about another neighbor bringing home. The, um, the, the guy worked for Coca-Cola, and so what do they call it? Bucks? Okay, um, so it was that size and um, you know, the guy had been doing it for years. And um, and, and it was determined that it was, that it was fine, that he could do that. It's a registered vehicle. You know, you, you could, you, you know, you can have registered vehicles on your property. Um, and so it, it was, you know, it was explained to the neighbor and, you know, that was the end of it. Um, so. Then, I'm just saying how it's, it's not. Um. You know, it's not, it's not a frequent occurrence. And I, you know, I understand where Bob wants to put some regulations on it so that it doesn't, you know, sort of, you know, run away or, or get away from us, but. It, 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 don't overcomplicate this. It's not. You know.
I'm wondering, is it better just to leave it as it is? If we're not getting complaints? And if, if, I don't know, do you think you just leave it?
Well, it's, it's, it's not that we're getting complaints, we had an inquiry.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of how, wha- what is allowed? You know, when you get a lot of people who wanna do the right thing, and I did not have an answer to give them. And that's all I'm really looking for is an answer to give. Somebody was asking a question.
So do you want more of an answer? Like, does there have to be a bylaw written? I guess there has to be, so you can uphold it.
You can, you, you can go into the, the, the use, um. The use statements at the beginning of the, not even on even in the table. Um, right under the section that says uh, unregistered, unroadworthy vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, need to be not on the lot or behind some sort of fence or covering. You can just, it's a one-line, you know, commercial vehicles, uh, less than twenty-six thousand G V W. Are allowed provided they're parked off-street, limit one per lot or something like that. We, we can wordsmith it later.
Okay.
So you really need to do.
Okay, thank you. So we can all think about that for January fourth, because we have a lot of homework over the holidays. Um, the next one on my list was the groundwater committee one that I've been talking about for a while. I actually wanted to wait until after the groundwater committee, because um, Anthony's on the groundwater committee. And we discussed at the last meeting that he was. Going to see what happened, like, there was a good discussion that was gonna take place at the groundwater committee and it, and it hasn't yet, so. I just wanna put that one on hold to let the groundwater committee weigh in. And going backwards and up to commercial, which I talked about, enforcement, okay. The only one left um, is signs. I think Anthony, you had added that um, to a couple meetings, saying you, you wanted to bring a sign by law forward.
Right, so I wanted to do some research. So I read, uh, I went through Hudson, Marlboro, Westboro, Southburrows. I haven't gotten through Shrewsbury yet, and, but I also noticed along the way, Wellesley, Concord, Weston. All have prohibited internally lit signs on their downtowns and main streets. And I would like to propose doing the same on uh, Business East. Main Street Residential, Downtown Business and Business East. Uh, for new, uh, either new businesses or sign replacements. I don't have the language yet, but I'll have that ready for next meeting.
So basically, anybody who has one now would be able to keep it?
Correct.
And when you say new, do you mean like replacement new or just a redesign lettering?
I don't know, I haven't thought about that, but I, I guess I, I was thinking if they're gonna replace a sign, update it, that you would, you would update it to an externally lit sign.
Okay. Okay.
Bob, do you wanna give feedback on that? I noticed that you didn't sort of agree with that.
Yeah, um, there's already a clause in the current sign bylaw. If you are replacing damaged or faded signs, no permits are required. So if you wanna switch from a internally illuminated and it's required to be externally illuminated. You've got a lot more writing in the sign by law than just making a few comments.
Good, good feedback.
And, and, and if I can just add in, um, Millie, to reiterate what you just said. The, uh, the existing signs would be grandfathered, because our sign by law. Um, is in the zoning bylaw. Some towns have their sign by law outside of the zoning bylaw, so therefore. There isn't any grandfathering, but um, but in Northborough, a- and in many towns, it's in the zoning bylaw. So, um, so if something like this were, you know, Anthony, if the, um. What, you, you talked about all the business districts, or, or I, I missed the, which, which ones you talked about?
Business East, uh, Main Street Residential, Downtown and Business West.
Um, so those, you know, any sign that's, that's in those. Districts today would, would be grandfathered, so this would really apply to all new signs. And like Bob said, the, the re-lettering of a sign is not considered a new sign the way our present bylaw is written. So, you know, that, there's a, there's a couple more components to this, if, if you were gonna propose something, so just to be aware of that.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Is there any way to find out how many signs that would actually be that are grandfathered? Or is that?
Well, well, every, everything, everything that exists at the time of. Adoption of a new bylaw is grandfathered.
Right, but it, just the internally lit signs, I was just wondering which, how many that would be. I was just curious. Oh, there you go.
There's no way to tell unless you wanna walk up and down the streets and count them on your hands.
Nope.
Um, what would probably have to happen is that all future sign applications that come into me. I have to make sure that they are externally illuminated and not internally illuminated.
Okay.
Again, existing signs. They're internally lit, maintaining them, re- redoing the face. Um, all that stuff that typically is maintenance and does not require a permit. Um, you know, would be, would be grandfathered, as Kathy said. So this would, if, this would basically affect any new sign. You would also have to make an exception for any kind of um, uh, EMC. Because those are in electronic message centers. Those are internally illuminated.
I think, don't we not allow those? I think those are only allowed in industrial.
No, we've got them in Business West.
Yeah, we, we passed, you passed a bylaw, um, a few years ago about, about the message boards. And um, and they're, I, I think they're in every zoning. In every business district.
I'll have to look at that. I think it was the opposite.
Yeah, I think we were only Business South, if I have that right. And then they were prohibited elsewhere.
Fact of the matter is they're allowed, so you're gonna have to make some sort of language for that as well.
Okay.
Thought we did this two years ago, but I'll have to look back.
Anthony, if you get it done before January fourth, could you send it out to in advance?
You bet.
So we can all, I, I would like, and I'm not the chair on January fourth, hopefully. So hopefully when Carrie comes back, I'm hoping we can, um, we'll definitely have to finish these up on January fourth and vote what we're gonna go forward with. Okay. And I think that's all.
Amy, you removed your contractor's yard issue?
Huh?
You removed your wanting to do, um, address contractor's yards?
I don't think that was ever on the list. That was last year.
Discussing it, but.
No, that was last year. It wasn't this year, that we went through that whole thing last year.
Mm-hmm.
You're not gonna do that, okay?
Okay, um. Let me see, had to bring out those. Next on the agenda. Our consideration of minutes, and I don't think we received any.
No, I, they're, they're, um, Melanie did, um, complete them, but I didn't send them out. I just got back into the office yesterday. So, um, so you'll have them for your next meeting.
Okay. All right, the next on the list is Planning Board Rules and Regulations, and that actually went back to talking about. When we're gonna get materials. For our next meeting. And we had talked about, Kathy, you had mentioned you were gonna put it at the top of a form for an application.
Yeah, we're gonna add it to the application forms, yep.
Yep, has that been done, do you know?
No.
Okay, and also you had sent out a list today with next year's meeting, agenda, meeting dates. When the applications are due, and that's just due to the town. I would like to consider adding another column. When all the materials are due, like the latest materials before the meeting, because I think. That will tell the applicant, we want every single, you know, all the materials the week before the meeting. I, I, let me, um, I just wanna pull it up.
Well, the, the only thing that I would say to that, Amy, is that it, it's a very simple calendar that, that. That we have found to be really successful about when people need to file it by. And then, and, and that answers and, and saves us as staff a whole set of questions. We just continually refer people to that list, you know, to the, to the calendar. Um, and then I think to add another column that says. You know, that says maybe, like, just as an example, you know, the application is due January first. And then we add another column that say, you know, material is due January fifteen. It's like, well, you know, what, what are they gonna follow? I think it's much more effective. If we add it to the application forms. And, and that it's just something that, um, that we reiterate in all of our development review meetings, which we hold. You know, practically on a weekly basis w- with applicants, you know, we just keep reiterating it that way.
I just found online, there was a, um, graph in use where it said last. You know, last day for new materials for January first meeting, and then it said last day for. Ongoing materials for the January first meeting would be a week before, just so it's. It's out there in black and white for the applicants to know. I know I've been on the board for seven years and. For seven years, we've been talking about getting the application materials. Five to seven days in advance, and we're still talking about it seven years later, so. I just wanted to find a final solution to get it to work.
A- Amy, I think the uh, calendar that Kathy put out was for the applicants to submit their application to get before the boards. In terms of advertising, and that is when all the application information is due in. The issue that we've been having with people submitting stuff. Uh, within a week of a meeting or, or less. Is when there's follow-up information that's required once a public hearing's been open, and that's a whole different thing as Kathy was describing. That's where the problem lies, where the applicant. Says his engineer has been busy and blah, blah, blah. So I think it's incumbent upon us as staff and the board to just reiterate when we have a public hearing that if it's continued. It's continued to a certain date and time, with an understanding that all information will be submitted to the board. In time for staff to review, in, to staff in order for them to review it in time to get it to the board, at least a week before, so. It, it's, the, what Kathy was talking about in that calendar was something really was, I think, different.
Okay, I can forward you the email I forwarded this morning too. It just laid out in black and white and it's really easy to follow. Uh, maybe I can download it and share it. I'm gonna try to share that with the board.
I also think that, um, in the real world, when you're coming before as an applicant. Sometimes an applicant will submit something to staff. Who then in turn may ask for a change before it goes before a board. And so I think in reality, the board needs to be somewhat uh, flexible and reasonable. Because there's back and forth with staff to get, um, everything to you. That can be presented, so someone may have sent something to Fred and Fred goes, that's great, but it's missing this. Okay, I'll get you this, or my engineer, so there's gotta be, it's not black and white, Amy. You know, if you're working in the business community, you gotta be a little more flexible and reasonable and business-friendly to work with them. And so in situations when, like Fred said, the applicant has already submitted everything. We may be in certain situations where they're going back and forth with staff and they're trying to get it, you know, so it can't always be. One hard date, otherwise you're just going to be delaying and delaying and delaying. And the planning board is gonna be looking as the board that kicks the can down the road. So I think it needs to be somewhat reasonable in the sense of, in these situations that Fred mentioned where. Where you could ask the applicant, do your best to get it before seven days. But they may need some flexibility as they work with their engineers. That's the reality of the world that we're in.
Right, but the reality of the planning board and other boards is also that we have. Lives during the day too, so to be getting application materials at four o'clock for a six o'clock meeting. Is very difficult. How do we make a, a real clear decision if we're not able to read it in advance in the meeting? And in that point, we just continue still anyways. So, this form, this, excuse me, Michelle, I'm still talking, excuse me. But the form says application for new materials, and then a week before, it's an application for any ongoing materials that's been back and forth. So it's clear, so it's not. It's not difficult to say to the applicant the day of the meeting, well, you're just getting the materi- materials now, so we have to continue it. It actually says if it's not a week in advance, that they understand. And then maybe they'll meet the deadlines and help, it will be helpful for the staff. I'm not trying to be unreasonable, but.
I think it's somewhat exaggerated what you're just saying. I don't find that all the time. I just think the board needs to be a little bit. More reasonable and cooperative and understand that in reality, situations like happen that you might not get it till the day before or two days before.
I don't want two days before, but for the majority of the meetings lately, it's been four o'clock, and I can go back, but I won't, but. That's all I'm trying to say. I'll, I sent it out to everybody today, and I'll forward it to everybody again. Okay. So next on the agenda was the master plan implementation committee. We met last month, and the first hour um the town, let me see. The first hour, the town administrator went through a summary of projects in process. The majority of them Kathy had gone forward and um explained them to us at one of our meetings. If the board wants, uh tomorrow, I'll send you the document that he sent us after the meeting. And then for the second half of the master plan implementation, we talked about the scope of the downtown, what we were gonna look at for plans and where we were gonna start, whether, you know. This contractors had a whole list, kind of like a checklist of what we could ask for in terms of downtown revitalization. There'll be another meeting this December sixteenth, and it's gonna be at seven o'clock this month. Last month, it was at six. And Kathy, you had mentioned you might um reach out to Emmy about any grants that could be available. I'm not sure if you had time yet.
Um, no, I have like, I I've I've been out the entire month in November, so um I have not done that. Um, and I think at your last meeting, um, the the town administrator, if I'm not mistaken, talked about how um that there we have funding available for for the entire, you know, um uh con, you know, downtown master plan. So so that's something that we wanna get started sooner than later. Um, and then I'm, I think that once you have some projects outlined from the master plan, you know, that then you can apply for, you know, various grants for that. But um but I can still, you know, I'll still check with um uh D H C D, you know, for for uh next Thursday.
Okay, thanks. Did anybody else have any questions? Okay, FY twenty-two goals, we'll skip that. I don't think we've talked about it yet. We just talked about grants. Kathy, you have a couple A and Rs to talk about tonight. You're muted.
Sorry. Um, yeah, let me just pull up the um the two A and Rs I have. One. So for um Kathy and to the chair, I'm gonna recuse myself to make a note that I'm recusing myself, the A and R for ninety-five West Street. Yeah, actually, the first one I pulled up, Michelle, just in no particular order, um but the first one I pulled up was for South Street. So I I think, you know, obviously, you're okay to sit on this one. And for some reason, I can't get my enlarge my, I I can't get my screen to enlarge. I don't know why, but um can everyone see that, this A and R? Can everyone see the map on the screen? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So um so this particular A and R is for um South Street. This is the 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 bend in the road. Um, you know, you know, downtown is up here. Ellsworth McAfee Park is down here. So these are two existing lots. Um, and there is uh house construction, uh uh I mean, a house, uh at le- at least a minimum of the foundation constructed on one of the lots. Um, originally, they had talked about doing a common driveway, but a- at this point, um, we believe they're not doing a common driveway. They didn't uh uh they haven't applied for one. Um, but in 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 verifying where this foundation is, um, it is partially on the other lot. So this A and R is to correct that um that uh that issue. Um, so the so the new lot lines are being redrawn. So that the house that's existing today, and I don't know if Bob is still on or not. I I honestly don't know how much of that house, not that it matters, but how much of that house is constructed. Um, but um, but again, when it was constructed, part of it was was mistakenly, you put on the other lot.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Um. The the lot was A and R, although it was not expressly told to me, but it doesn't, you don't need to be a road scholar to figure out that they discovered that they built the house in the wrong spot for whatever reason. And they had to do an A and R on the lot to make both lots conforming and the properties conforming within each lot as well. Um, there is a permit for the one at the top of the hill, which is drawn on this plan. Um. I was contacted by the current owner of the building that they have somebody who signed a purchase and sale, so the house is going to rejuvenate its permit. And we will get back to um finishing it. Um, I sent the applicant or the builder a list of things he needs to get back to me to get things back on track. Uh, I have not heard any news about what is um uh labeled as lot one A um on on the on the plan. So that's the update.
So it's still, you know, the the um you know, at the at the conclusion of this, it they're basically just realigning the the lot line. They're not creating any new lots. There were two lots. There still are two lots.
That's correct.
And the lot one A is still, if wanted to be a buildable lot?
It is still a buildable lot.
Okay.
Yep. But presently, no house or foundation or anything on that, Millie.
Mm hmm, yep. Does it look like the common driver will have to change, like?
They they don't have a common driveway, Amy. They they didn't, they didn't pursue um building a common driveway.
Oh, so that bump out is the turnaround up top. It's not like a stub. Oh, on the drive, I am looking at the driveway as it goes up.
That's correct. All that driveway, all that driveway is for lot two.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so if if, you know, if if nobody has any questions, you know, this and along with the next one that I'll explain, you know, the board just wants to take a vote on it, and then um it just requires one signature. If somebody can stop by this week, that would be wonderful.
Okay, does anyone wanna make a motion?
Excuse me.
We approve the A and R for two twenty-three South Street.
Second.
Okay, so moved. I'll take a roll call vote. Um, Michelle Gillespie.
Approved.
Millie Milton. Approved. Anthony Zayton.
Hi.
And I agree also.
All right, so let me um, let me get rid of this one, and oops, that didn't do. And on the next one, I'll recuse myself. Okay, can everybody see that one? For the for West Street? Okay.
Yes.
So this is um, uh, you know, you you should be relatively familiar with this. This is the um common driveway, uh that this, these lots involve the common driveway that the planning board approved um within the past year. So this is the creation of uh this, this is the existing house that that's there. And then we have um uh that, um, let me zoom in actually, and you can see the lot numbers. So we have um this particular lot, which is lot four, kind of going backwards. Um, we have lot five. And I'm really apologizing that I, it's just how I put my cursor up here. Um, lot six. Um, lot three and let's see, um. Oh, and yeah, and the and the uh one B. So we've got um one, two, three, four, five, five lots in total. Don't go down a little smaller, just.
But did you say this was, these are the lots for the common driveway that we approved?
Yes, yeah. So these lots were shown on the common driveway, but that was a specifically a common driveway, you know, site plan. So then, you know, the usually the next step is, you know, after that common driveway um is approved, you know, the the applicant comes back, you know, with the actual division of the lots. So that's what you have here. So this is all originally, I think we were calling this said maybe seventy-five to ninety or eighty-five to ninety-five West Main Street, but I mean, excuse me, West Street. But this is on, if people are familiar with it, you know, this is West Street, this is Cherry. Um, excuse me, Cherry's down here. Th- this is a one of the North Road Trails system over here.
Okay. I guess I was confused, cuz I, yeah, the common driver was eighty-five West, and this is ninety-five.
Yeah, it's the 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 property was um, wh- when it was originally filed, it was eighty-five to ninety-five West Main Street. But it's, yeah, it's it's all the same property. And uh and this is further, you know, dividing the property, you know, into the the A and R lots, you know, they all have frontage um on West Street, and they all um, you know, meet the um, actually, they all exceed the uh, you know, minimum lot size.
So that current service road they just put in, their rock road, is that just for construction, or is there that's something else?
A service road, they.
That, I can handle that, Kath.
Okay.
Um, Anthony, that is the beginning of the common driveway. It's the first couple hundred feet. Um, it allows them to relocate the driveway for the existing house onto the proposed common driveway. Uh, but no other lot, no other houses are being built at this time. Um, it's just the beginning of the common driveway, which will extend out.
Okay.
And and we initially limited it to just be, you know, initially for the access for that existing house because that house has been sold and someone is living there.
Okay, I can't remember. Will those, that lot one B or one A, do they have access onto the road, or are they coming off the common drive?
Uh, the the lot, there is this lot that is, has its own access, um, which is a little, just one lot over here. Um, and that was sold separately, I believe. Um, and that is coming off of West Street, but these are all, will all be accessed by the common driveway.
Okay.
Actually, I believe it's one A is the existing house will come off the exist, the proposed common driveway. And then one uh then lot three will come off the proposed common driveway, and four, five, and six. One B is the one that has its own access because they have driveway opening beyond the wetland area out onto uh West Street.
Okay. Interesting.
Okay, I was thinking that, okay, thanks, Fred. I was just, I was thinking that this lot was further up here, but.
No, it's there.
Yeah, so it's, so again, it's a five lot, you know, which is the max that's allowed, is five lots, so it's five lots.
Okay. Okay, any more questions? Do I have a motion? I make a motion to accept the A and R for ninety-five West Street.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I'll take a roll call vote. Um, Millie?
Approved.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Amy's and I, and Carrie and Michelle aren't here, so. It's approved. Okay, so next on the agenda. We, and who wants to sign these? Do you want, I can come down and sign them. What did you say you were gonna, Millie? Either way.
I can, I can go in and sign.
In the way?
Yeah.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have them on the calendar, Millie, whenever, you know, you know the drill. I know the drill.
Okay, thank you. Um, next on the agenda is subcommittee updates. Does anybody have any updates?
Actually, I believe you skipped over Newton Street.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, I did.
No worries on my end.
Sure, if you wanna go through that for us, that'd be great.
There we go. Um, as you may recall, there's was a lot of activity on Newton Street, couple of scenic roads, a lot of work was required uh to be done. About two years ago, the road was resurfaced uh by Mr. Ramadan. Uh, we worked with town council to make sure that he and his uh paving company would get paved, uh get paid. And then there was some outstanding work to be done from that plan, which included uh some guardrail installation, which was done um earlier this year. I did get an as-built plan from um engineering design consultants. And Peter Bemis is here as an attendee, and I believe he wants to speak to you about that. Um, in reviewing the as-built, the plan that was required for Mr. Ramadan's improvements was completed. Um, other than some easements that were required to be deeded to the town, um drainage easement and some permanent roadway widening and some temporary roadway widenings. Um, those have not been done. I have since spoken to Mr. Ramadan. He's working with his engineer and his attorney, and will draft something and get it to us in hopes that he can get uh what money is left in the account uh paid back to him. Um, Mr. Bemis is looking for release of the lots on the Gustus, the former Gustuson property. Uh, however, the scenic road decision required some work that they would like to do in terms, in the terms of uh building one of those homes. Um, changes a slope in the front of the property so that a guardrail is not required. But there was a condition in there that the road would be lowered at uh Station eight plus oh five, and um that has not been done, so um I don't see Mr. Bemis's hand up at this point, but uh, there it goes. So if you wanna bring him in, you can have that discussion with him directly.
Peter Bemis here, can you hear me?
Mm hmm.
Great, thank you. Okay, so um if some board members will recall, uh, March of uh twenty sixteen is when we had submitted our uh scenic road uh plan uh on behalf of the Seventh Group uh that had this property under agreement with the Gustusons. Uh, this is the land on the east side of of Newton Street. Um, we did um in response to deliberations with the board, prepare a three-sheet plan set um in April. So again, in 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 March, we did our scenic road plan, but in April, uh in response to those deliberations, uh the same driveway openings with basically eighty feet of of wall affected area, uh no trees, no street trees were, or scenic trees were ever affected by the proposal. Um, and in that plan, we did uh suggest a lowering of the road could be achieved to three twenty-eight point eight. Uh, however, um engineering design consultants, no Seventh Group was was involved in the road construction work. Mr. Ramadan took it upon himself to to complete that work with the plans that he had prepared by Cornerstone. Um, Cornerstone's as-built did show uh three twenty-nine sixty-four, or essentially nine uh point six inches higher than what we had suggested the road could be lowered to. Uh, the road was lowered some three plus feet. Um, but it did, they did not get to the grade that we had suggested they could. Uh, nor do I see the ability to do that any longer. The road was built. We had no involvement with it. Um, Fred in his own admission here did participate in that process uh with the DPW and town council, apparently, uh to get the folks paid that did the work. Um, but they, you know, they did do it o- o- out of a specification that that we had no control over. Um, so again, for the record, Ramadan and Cornerstone did the construction work, engineering design didn't. Um, but our lots were still tied up, so in June, on June eleventh, actually, I I did walk the road improvement limits with Fred. Um, did look at the guardrail limits. There were four project areas that required a guardrail. And I personally uh brought on a guard. And I personally, uh, brought on a guardrail contractor, coordinated that work. And did submit a final as-built on or about November tenth. Um, seeking the ability to get before the board. To, uh, be released of our responsibilities under a scenic road permit for that aspect of the project. We still have to do our driveway openings and we still have to do our, uh, road improvement associated with the building of a lot. It does not seem to me to make sense to do the road shoulder widening. Without doing the lot construction, because they would go hand in hand with each other, I explained that to, to Fred. So yes, the road wasn't quite lowered to the grade that was suggested by our firm, but we didn't. We weren't involved in the construction process at all. And other folks were, and other folks, I believe at this point have signed off on that work. And to be further held responsible for it doesn't seem to make sense. From my perspective, I will complete the work. Or I see to it that the work is completed that, that is also contemplated in the decision about road shoulder widening. Uh, and then complying with the. Eighty feet of wall, scenic road that has, that is affected by each driveway, because there are four driveways, which one. Has been, been built, but, but has a barrier across it until the board. Sees fit to, to sign off on that. That's, that's pretty much it, thank you for your time.
Okay, so Fred, is he? Asking for a bond reduction, is that what this is, or we're just getting an update?
Well, I, I have a difference of opinion than, uh, Mr. Bemis. As I recall. Mr. Ramadan's, uh, scenic road permit was issued a few years before. The engineering design consultants planned for the Gustuson property. And, um. At the time we were reviewing. The Gustuson property scenic road permit. The applicants, uh, came to an agreement and said they would work together and one of the conditions of the scenic road permit. For the Gustuson property was that the roadway would be lowered. Um, and they agreed to work together on that. And to see that it happened, Mr., uh. My understanding is that that agreement. Basically fell apart at some point. And the work was done in accordance with the plan that Mr. Ramadan, uh, had approved a couple of years before. The, at the time, there was some discussion about amending that plan and the. Applicants agreed to work together and so it wasn't required at that point, but the road was required to be lowered. The lowering of that road was not required on Mr. Ramadan's scenic road permit. So it's a, it's a. I can agree that it's not. An easy thing to do, but it's not impossible to lower that roadway now. Because Mr. Ramadan is required to provide an easement. The reason the road wasn't lowered more. At the time Mr. Ramadan scenic road permit was put forth was because the Gustuson. The owner of the property that is the other, uh, common drive and scenic, uh, the other individual lots and scenic road permit. Refused to grant an easement so that the roadway could be graded. And then a few years later, they came along with a builder who wanted to build some lots on their property. And they then said they didn't realize what they were, they didn't realize why, that they said no. And at that point. Rather than amending the plan. The condition was put in the scenic road permit for the Gustuson property, so it's a, it is a bit complicated. Uh, but it doesn't seem fair that the. Gustuson property should not be required to lower the road further. As Mr. Ramadan was required to do quite a bit of work in Newton Street. For the, he did have many more lots, he had the eight lots on his common driveway. As well as additional Form A lots that he improved, so. At this point, I'm not recommending that you release anything from the Gustuson property, but that is your call. The work is done, there does seem to be, uh, quite a bit of improvement with the new pavement and. Various lowering, the guardrail has been done. The work was done in accordance with the plan that Mr. Ramadan was required to build it upon, but. There is this section of road that. Was wanted to be lowered further and has not been, so not quite sure. How you wanna go about.
Right.
Biding up the responsibility.
Millie, you have your hand out? Yeah, so if I'm understanding this correctly, were there two permits? Issued for the same road?
Uh, that's correct. The, um. Initially, the, all the property on the. Northerly side of Newton Street was owned by Mr. Ramadan and, uh, he was required to make improvements on the street. Some of the improvements in terms of lowering the road, uh, he was not able to get easements for, there was one spot in particular. Towards the end near number three twenty-five that we wanted to lower because it was quite, uh. Quite a short vertical curve and. Tricky point in the roadway, but the neighbor on the other side of the street would not grant an easement, so that work couldn't be done. Further down the road, uh, where the Gustuson property was, there's another place. Um, and this is right where, uh, the location where the common driveway that Mr. Ramadan did get approved as well. Comes out onto Newton Street, that we wanted to lower a little bit more to improve the site distance, especially with. That number of houses coming out onto the common driveway onto Newton Street. And at the time. The scenic road permit for the Gustuson property required that road to be lowered that much further. And, um, it was agreed upon that they would work together to do that. When the time came to do the work, the agreement had been. Not honored by either party from my understanding, so. Uh, they went forward and built the plan according to what was approved from Mr. Ramadan. There was an obligation in my mind for the applicants to work together to come up with a new plan. Uh, not an obligation for Mr. Ramadan to. Design the road in accordance with. The permit for the Gustuson property, but. There was an expectation that they would work together. And my understanding is they did not work together. At all.
Well, well, no, there, there, there was some work together because the road never would have got to this lower level. If it was not for the cooperation, so, so the, the work was done beyond the right-of-way limit. Yeah, but he did not get it to the level that engineering design consultants had recommended, it is. Lower than what the plan called for by Cornerstone. So I, 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 I don't, I, there is a blending here. Because they did, they, the seventh group, uh, Mark, Mark Wamboldt was working with Mr. Ramadan. But they, 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 they never, we did, engineering design consultants didn't coordinate the work. So, so therefore, when the stations were marked out. They did not put it to the grade that we had said could be achieved. And I'm sorry for that, Mr. Ramadan elected not to go forward with us. And, and, and I mentioned that to Fred and I brought it to his attention early on. That I would have no responsibility for the road construction. Um, and I'm sorry for that, but, but what I can control is the shoulder work that has to be done on. Land that was formerly of Gusterson on the, on the east side of, of the right-of-way, which is still in your decision. The decision did list a grade that was even lower than what our plan had shown, which I don't think was even achievable. But, you know, that, I had nothing to do with that. Elevation was on the sealed plan that we provided was, uh, three twenty-eight eight and they, there, as I said, you, there, there, uh. Was nine point six inches higher than that in the as-built provided by Cornerstone. I didn't survey that point and all we did was surveying the guardrails. That we, we installed. So I feel as though, you know, we have fulfilled our obligations under the plan. And we got roped into this whole scenic road. Because Mr. Ramadan had never done his work. In, in, in twenty, um. Two thousand and seven, I think it went back to. So, so, so for those nine years. It hadn't gotten done and, and, um, and we just kinda got. Looped into it because our responsibilities would have been for our driveways, normally under a scenic road for approval, not required lots. You had Mr. Ramadan's attention because he had a special permit. On a scenic road, and that's why you were able to, um, apply these other requirements to him. So, again. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll stop speaking.
If I could just jump in, the, Mr. Ramadan had two different permits, the, the special permit. For the common driveway is different than the scenic road. Permit, so there were conditions for the special permit common driveway. And then there were conditions in the scenic road. Permit, and then also, um, that, I, I don't, I don't. Think that this developer was, that, that roped into anything, he wants to develop on a scenic road. And you have a scenic road process. And, um, a public hearing was held, the scenic road decision was written by the board. And, and I think it is important to note or to remind everybody, you know, that this has been well over ten years, that this. Argument, um, continues to, to happen. And, and I think as, as our town engineer stated, you know, it may not be the easiest. Thing to accomplish at this point, but you know, that's not in our control either. We're, we're not out there constructing the road, you know, there's two developers out there. And I think it's, I think it's very important for the board to uphold their decision. Um, in this, in this, I mean, in all instances, but in, in this particular instance, this, this has been. A very long process and, and to be this close to, to finally finishing. Uh, you know, both scenic road. Permits, I, you know, I, I, I don't. I don't think a case has been made as to why those conditions shouldn't be fulfilled.
I agree.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say that then for this evening, I, I would ask you for your decision in writing because, um. You had council involved in this, the last time I was involved, that's why I went ahead and got the, the guardrails done because I expected. That we would have fulfilled the obligations under the permit. You know, and unfortunately, I'm, I'm tied to a project that I really don't wanna have any involvement with, but I, but I am. So, um, at this point, I would ask for your decision in writing because I'm going to then pass it along to, to council and, and have them respond.
And, and just to.
Thank you.
Just to remind the board about that to the, um. Uh, be- behind the scenes, you know, which, which, which happens every day, I mean, that's what we do as, as staff, but, um. Our town council, our legal council has had several conversations with Mr. Wamboldt's attorney. And, and Mr. Wamboldt's attorney understands that their. That, that the, what the conditions of the scenic road are, so. I mean, not an issue to put, you know, a, a vote that you take tonight in writing, I mean, that's, you know, you, you always do that. We follow it up with a letter, so I mean, that's not an issue, but. But there have been on, been, been ongoing discussions, um, between town council and, um, Mr. Wamboldt's attorney. And, um, the, you know, they, they have concluded. And with. With the conclusion that, that this scenic road is a valid scenic road permit.
Okay, so. I'll take comments from board members, but I, I just wanna clarify what we're asking for tonight, so. Staff would like. Um, a vote on whether we support the original. Decision? Because he's asking for a bond release. I just wanna make sure we vote on, on what you want us to vote on.
Well, there's, I mean, Fred can clarify this, but there, but there's no bond that's been posted by. Mr. Wamboldt, the, what, what he has is the, is the scenic road. Um, decision and, and. And. As staff, we are suggesting to the board that, you know, that scenic road decision needs to be completed by, by the applicant.
Okay.
Fred, I don't know if you have.
That's, that's pretty much it, um. There's the only one with a bond was Mr. Ramadan, he has a little over fifteen thousand dollars left in the bond. And, um, that is still being held by the treasurer's office. And not willing, I'm not recommending a release of that until. As a minimum, the releases, the easements that he was required to provide. Are submitted and reviewed by our town council. What I believe Mr. Bemis is looking for is a release from the, uh, obligations of the. Scenic road permit for Mark Wamboldt and the seventh group.
Related to Newton Street though, o- o- only Newton Street, not, not the responsibilities on the property itself. Thank you.
Right, the. The, one of the conditions in the scenic road permit, so. Not quite sure how to, huh, what, what you're looking for from me to give you, uh.
So. Does any board members have, do they have any comments? I know this has been going on. For a long time, so. It was going on when I started back in two thousand and fourteen. Michelle, do you have any comments? Because you will probably hear from the beginning.
I agree with Fred.
Okay, I just wanna check.
I don't have any issue.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
So what we're really being asked to vote for is a release, i- is, well. A release of conditions of Newton Street scenic road permit? For Wamboldt?
Well, I was gonna put forth a vote that the scenic road decision needs to be completed by the applicant. Including the Newton Street conditions, because this isn't really. I mean, I guess it's a vote, but. It's not something that comes in front of us that long, that. Often, like, I guess the applicant is asking for a release from the condition, so he's asking for a change of the. The permit? Permit. So Kathy, would you, would you word the vote as, um?
You, you know what, Amy, why don't you, um. Since the, what was on the agenda tonight was just an update on the status of the work. I've given you that, the pavement's been done a couple of years ago, guardrail's been done, why don't you let me put together a summary? And, um. Outline it for you. Because some of the members of the board were not here when the scenic road permit was. Approved, I will include copies of the, both of the permits for the two, uh, properties, give you a summary. And a recommendation that then you can then, uh, take up at the January fourth meeting, kind of.
Sounds perfect to me.
Bumbling around trying to figure out if we worded something correctly and.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so we'll add this to the agenda for January fourth.
Thank you.
Anybody else have, oh, there's subcommittee updates. Next on the agenda. CPC Matt. Okay, do you have any updates? Um, we just basically went over, uh, some of the, the fiscal. Uh, state of affairs for our, um. Applications and a quick rundown of each applicant, but what I can do is maybe. And we're gonna have a lot on January sixth, but give a pretty concise and brief overview of what those would entail. Okay. Thank you, or even if you just send it out. Can we do it that way? Yeah, yeah. And then if anybody has any questions on it, we can talk about them. On January fourth. Yep. Okay.
And the, and the CPC, um. Which you were probably gonna add, Millie, sorry, but the CPC will hold their hearing on January sixth. Um, and they're, they're actually, um, are gonna do two meetings in January, so it's the sixth and, uh. Uh, the sixth and the twentieth.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yep, and, um, and I believe the applications, Millie, so you, you, I, I don't think you have to send them out again, but. I believe the applications are on the planning website. They're all posted there and I will, I'll double check that tomorrow, um, to see if they are, if not. Millie, whether you wanna forward it or, or, you know, I can just send them out to the board if the board's interested in all the applications.
Okay. Some of them are pretty long. I'd be interested if you don't mind forwarding it.
No.
Yeah, design review. Um, is planning on meeting December sixteenth or seventeenth, but we haven't met in a little while. So I think it's a duplex Kathy on the.
Yes, yep, at eighty, um, eighty-seven South Street, uh, no, excuse me, um, Hudson Street. Um, it's a small brick, um, house, I, I don't think anyone's lived in there for. A few years. And, uh, so anyways, the, the owner is looking to, um, take down that house and, um, construct a duplex. So, excuse me, um, you know, they've prepared some initial drawings, um, for the designer view committee to, um. To consider, so hopefully Amy, or for the rest of the board, but hopefully. To consider, so hopefully, Amy, or for the rest of the board, but hopefully, Amy, I'll have that solved tomorrow, what day we'll end up meeting.
I'm sorry, it's eighty-seven Hudson?
Yes, eighty-seven Hudson.
Is that an older house, do you know?
Yes, yeah, it's a small brick house, and I um, I honestly don't know they, you know, if they have to go through um. The historical commission, I'm not sure how old it is, um Millie, but that, that's not anything that they have to start yet. Because they haven't even applied um for the special permit, because that'll eventually come before the planning board, um you know, for a special permit.
Okay. Okay. How about groundwater and open space?
Nothing for groundwater.
Uh the open space has met, and they uh presented two items that they're going to town meeting with it. And that's the first one, which I think is a great project, is the disability trail, which is um going to be behind the senior center. And the other is going to be, um I believe, funding to start the process for looking at the um aqueduct bridge. And looking into that, so those are the only two open spaces going with town meeting this year.
Okay, did they decide to go for any open space money? Into their fund or no?
Yep, actually, that's that, that the third one for the conservation fund, yeah.
Okay. All right, I think if anyone doesn't have anything to add that wraps it up, but I just wanted to say congratulations to Kathy. This is, from what I hear, this is the last meeting?
Yes, I, yep, I was just gonna con- conclude with that, or or just add that to the end of your meeting. I think, I think most people have heard, it's like, what, once you, once you start talking about it, 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 you know. Spreads faster than you can to get ahead of it, but um, but it's all a good thing, so I am, I'm retiring from the town of Northborough. Um I, my last day will actually be the thirty-first of this month, so this is my, my last meeting with all of you. And um, and I just w- wanna say, it, it's, it's been a, a pleasure to, to work with all of you, it's. Um I have so enjoyed and and loved my time in Northborough, and um. I've, I've worked for the public sector since I got out of grad school, and um, and it's just. I, I, I think it's just in my blood, I think, to, to work with the public and volunteers and, and. Um it's just, it's just been wonderful being here in Northborough and, and working with the planning board and, and all the other boards and. Um so I, I absolutely appreciate all the work that you do and, and um. Uh and, and, and I'll, and I'm free from night meetings, I, I don't even know what that's going to be like. Uh you know, for thirty-odd years, it's been, you know, two to three nights a week. Um so I, that, that's probably gonna be my biggest adjustment. But, but thank you all, and I, and I am here in the, in the office, you know, for, for till the end of the month, and. Um you know, I'll, I'll be, uh you know, working on the, the, the information that we talked about tonight, and. Um as Amy mentioned, we, and, and Millie, we, you know, we have the master plan. Um implementation committee meeting next week, and, you know, a design review meeting that we're trying to do, so. Um you know, so even though people are, are telling me, oh, come on, you know, it's, it's December, it's that, that, you know, you're at the end. Like, I got meetings scheduled to the thirtieth, so. So anyways, I'm here, until the end of the month.
And if I could just go on record, I know Kathy's been working for the town for thirty-seven years, and she is. Truly admired throughout the state of Massachusetts as a town planner, and it's a huge loss to the town of Northborough. But you've worked hard and you certainly deserve this, and I would just say she's on the same level as John Kadir for his fiscal responsibility. Throughout the state, people truly admire Kathy and what she's done, and um, you know, you will be missed. You will certainly be missed. All that you've done.
Thank you, Kathy.
It's hard to believe it won't, won't be the same.
Thank you very much, and that, and just to let you know too, I mean, that the, the um, the town administrator's office has, has advertised. Um you know, for the position, and so hopefully, you know, it won't be long um before, you know, before the position is filled and, and you'll. You know, you'll have another um, another person to work with. Um in the meantime, uh you know, Fred's going to help out um as far as just, you know, trying to, you know. Keep you on track as, you know, as far as posting agendas and, and things like that, I mean, he's already, you know, got his full-time job, so. Um he, he won't be writing bylaws or anything, but um, you know, just, you know, for at least part of the next. Couple of months, I mean, we, you know, we're hoping that it gets filled um quickly, but um. You know, so Fred will, Fred will be helping you out, and, and of course, you know, Bob is always here to um, to, to assist the board, so. But thank you all very much.
No, Kathy, I don't know how we're gonna do this.
Well, uh thank you for your kind words, but you know, we're all replaceable, we'll, they'll, we'll hopefully find someone, so.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And enjoy all your meetings, I mean, not your meetings, all your evenings.
I don't know, I, 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 I really, that's gonna be the biggest change, I don't, I honestly don't know what that's gonna be like, it's.
You could, you can watch him on TV, Kathy.
Exactly, I'll, I'll troll you all on YouTube.
Did I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second. Roll call vote, yep. Um Michelle Glossby? Millie Milton?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
And Amy's an aye. Bye, everybody.